Oh, Canada! Our home and nature, land through page and love. We love our sounds of land. We grow in parts we see right, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada! We stand on the horde. God give our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada! We stand on the horde.
Thank you. We'll move on to disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a conflict on the fee schedule, Schedule D, of page 103 of the report.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I see no others. We'll move on to approval of the council minutes from the week of September 11th, 2017. Moved by Council Jacob, seconded by Council Wilkinson. All in favor? And that's carried. And then the minutes of the special council meeting held on September 18th, 2017. Moved by Council Verbeeky, seconded by Council Dunn. Are there comments or questions? All in favor? And that's carried. Was there any business arising out of the minutes? Nothing? Okay. Well, then, we'll move on to public meetings, and their first one is a drainage meeting to consider the preliminary engineer's report for the Goral Drain, petition for drain. And I leave that to you, Luanne. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tonight, I'm going to do this report a little differently. Dawn from Baird A.E. has his own presentation. So what we're asking you tonight is to adopt the preliminary report with the recommendations that are in front of you, and ask that he move forward with a final report. So I'll pass it over to him, and then I'll take it back towards the end.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're here to present a preliminary report for a new drain. The original request for drain work was submitted by Dr. Goral at 418 County Road 20, which is right along the -- I think it's right there. Dr. Goral's house is on the edge of what is currently a natural water course. As such, it has no current status under the Drainage Act. From our observation, it is apparent that the flows in the channel are causing damage to the channel, and banks are collapsing in a few locations. The ground in this location is basically sand and silty sand. This is creating unstable banks. Continuing flows will only make the situation worse. As a proposed new drain, a petition has to be submitted to the municipality. The Drainage Act is very specific on the requirements for a valid petition, and the criteria are set out in Section 4 of the Act. It requires more than 50 percent of the landowners in the area requiring drainage, more than 60 percent of the land area in the area requiring drainage, or the road authority of the road through the area requiring drainage. In this case, that would be the county. This issue presented the biggest hurdle in proceeding with the report. Took a number of meetings and discussions with various property owners to finally get a valid petition for the drain. There are a total of 20 properties in the area owned by 13 different property owners. Six property owners representing 63 percent of the properties in a drainage area finally signed the petition. This process took over two years to get a valid petition. The area requiring drainage is shown on this map. This black line right here is the area that is going to be part of this new drain. It extends down into here. There's these three lots down in here that it goes through. It's bounded by the Judson-Morse Drain, sort of in the northwest. Anything in that area drains to that drain. That boundary is established from previous reports and available topography. In the east, you've got the Pettapease Drain, drainage area. A branch of the Pettapease Drain actually extends a little bit into this new drainage area, but it's still having a lot of drainage problems. There's basically one catch basin attached to this Pettapease Drain, so we've left this boundary right there. None of the properties to the south of County Road 20 in here appear to drain north to County Road 22, and they're not included in the new drainage area. This open channel right here basically used to drain -- used to extend further up north through this area, and over time, it's been filled in. There's still a culvert underneath the road here that was part of this drain. It's a 900-millimeter CSP. The culvert remains and is still very active during a rainstorm. It's believed sunlight hydroponics currently drain through this culvert, so that would be this greenhouse area right here. The County Road 20 drainage system also outlets to the channel through a 450 concrete pipe. So the county has a storm sewer all the way down County Road 20 to this point, and from here to this point. Both of these culverts are causing significant erosion at the outlet, and the bank is being seriously eroded away from County Road 20. The pipes are being undercut and are currently collapsing into the drain or are sticking a couple of meters out of the bank. The vertical bank at these outlet pipes is now close to three meters high. So it's a dangerous situation that it keeps getting closer to County Road 20. The County Road 20 pipe not only drains County Road 20, but a lot of these fronting lots have connections, or they're draining through catch basins into that county pipe. So based on our investigation, we're confident that the properties in the drainage area are contributing flows to the channel. The recommendations we're making for the work: We need to clean out this drain from County Road 20 right down to the outlet. There's a lot of dead trees, vegetation, debris, a lot of it left over from the 2010 tornado, and just general decay over time. Again, through this channel, we're going to be repairing and defining a low-flow channel. This will involve excavating a channel to a cross-section that'll basically carry a two-year storm, and then lining the channel with fiber mat or something that'll keep it stable till the grass grows in. We'll be installing subdrains along the sides of this drain in some locations to intercept water that's coming out of the sandy banks and direct it to that low-flow channel. At the outlet pipes at County Road 20, there are a couple of options. One is just to build a great big concrete head wall to protect the bank. This would be a huge structure, probably at least three meters high, five meters wide, concrete wing walls. And involved with that would be a lot of work at those -- at that outlet just to fix the banks that are, you know, fairly steep. The other option, instead of the head wall, would be to basically extend the two pipes that are coming out of the bank right now to a manhole, and then one pipe further down, and then cover that area in. And I think cost-wise, if we go about 20 meters with a pipe, it'd be similar in cost to the head wall, but it would clean up the area a lot more. Plus, it would provide access. This property -- it's hard to see the property lines, but this property right here, the drain cuts it in two, and if we fill in this end right here, it would provide access to both sides of that property. Okay, so the cost for the works I just outlined would basically assess to all the upstream property owners who use the drain for their outlet. In addition, there will be a number of items that will be assessed as special benefit to those properties that they will benefit. So these items basically can't be assessed to everybody upstream. These will be directed more at the actual property owners. So there's a significant erosion problem near the homes -- near the house of Dr. Goral right in here. While the flow of the water in the drain may be causing some of the problem, the owner of the property will be assessed most of the cost for a wall to support the bank adjacent to the buildings. The channel cuts right through this middle property and basically divides that in half also. And that owner's requested access across the drain to his property on the opposite side of the drain, basically a culvert with a gravel path, and that owner would be responsible for all those costs. The owner where we were mentioning we were going to extend the culvert a little bit, he's requested that the covered portion of the drain be extended further to the south by at least 25 meters. We'll review that, maybe even go further. The cost for extending the pipe beyond the initial 25 meters would be assessed to this property owner as a special benefit. In addition, he's got an irrigation system in place that we would be taking out, but the manhole we're going to put in here, we're looking at putting a much deeper seep to hold water, and that would basically replace his irrigation system. And a section of the bank right alongside this driveway here is collapsing, and that'll be fixed with riprap. Some of this cost will also be the responsibility of the property owner. So those three items will be mostly a special benefit to this property owner. Currently, okay, the owners of the greenhouse operations, there's two -- these two properties are greenhouse operations. There's a lot of flooding in this area, and they basically don't have any outlet other than that one catch basin I mentioned that really isn't working for them. So what we're going to do, from this culvert that goes across the road, we're going to extend a 600-millimeter pipe to this property line here so that they will have access to an outlet for their drainage system on their properties. They will be responsible for extending the pipe into their property. But this pipe will be done as part of the drainage report, and it would be a special benefit to these two properties. Currently, the only storm drainage for County Road 20 is the county's storm drainage system that I already mentioned. It includes pipes ranging from 300 to 400-millimeter diameter. And as I mentioned, it's -- a number of these properties are draining into that pipe, so it's not exclusively a County Road pipe anymore, as far as I'm concerned. The pipe's large enough to handle the two-year storm from the road in these fronting properties. We are recommending the pipe be incorporated as part of the proposed Goral Drain. The county would have to be compensated for the pipe through the report, and repairs to the system would be made as required. The existing catch basins are generally in very poor condition. This won't significantly change any of the existing flooding issues in here, but it would provide legal access for these properties to the drain and provide a means to request future maintenance through the town. If there are any significant issues with drainage, and as I've said, we're not aware of anything major, it may be necessary to replace the county pipe with a larger pipe or install a new pipe except from the county pipe. So as I said, you've got a lot of work that'll be assessed to everybody, and these other items, it'll be assessed as special benefit to certain properties. Because this is a preliminary report, there has not been a follow-up with the Ministry of Natural Resources or Department of Fisheries and Oceans. This will be done as part of the final report preparation. We don't anticipate any serious problems. There's a 600-millimeter concrete wall at the end of this drain, so there shouldn't be fish going back up the drain. And habitat can be created elsewhere in the channel if there's snake or other animal habitat disturbed. The cost estimate in the report is very preliminary and could change based on the final design. The numbers in the report do not include the cost to acquire the County Road storm sewer. Other costs may increase when more detailed design is carried out as part of the final report, or if environmental concerns must be accommodated. It also does not include the cost of any geotechnical investigation, if any is required. And it does not include extending the pipe, I mentioned in here, beyond that initial 25 meters, so that'd be additional cost. So that's basically it for what I'm going to talk about.
Thank you. Luanne, did you want to take it back now, or are we ready for questions?
I can, or did you want to open it up to the public first?
Can I let council ask questions since we've just had the report? Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned earlier in your report, excuse me, that only 13 of 20 of the property owners responded. Is that correct?
Well, we talked to as many as we could, or as many as were interested in talking. Basically, where was that? Okay, so what I said was that in this new drainage area, there is a total of 20 properties, and there's 13 different property owners that own those 20 properties, so we're dealing with 13 owners. And in order to get that legal petition, we got 63 percent of that total area, the owners of 63 percent of that area, to sign the petition. And so it was basically six property owners out of the 13 who owned 63 percent of the properties that signed the petition, so that made it legal.
If I may, one more question. You also stated that a large amount of County Road 20 drains into that as well.
Yes.
Will any of this be assessed to the county because we're doing drainage for them?
Yes, absolutely. They will be paying their fair share of whatever costs there are, yes.
Checks in the mail type thing? Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Verbeeky.
Where are they, Mayor? Attorney Mayor, thanks. Just want to know, because we've run into this before, you've got some greenhouses there cut in half. How sure are you that the assessed owners are going to be paying their fair share? Do some still go to the north? It looks, you know, how do you justify a...
Well, you're right. This line does go through some of the greenhouses, but the line was basically established through this drainage report for the Judson-Morse Drain. So these lands are assessed to that Judson-Morse. These lands are not assessed to any drain right now.
Okay, so I can see a little issue. And you're talking about putting a head wall on the -- near the -- where it goes in there?
Yeah, right where the...
Have you talked with any of our other staff, thinking if you're putting a head wall in here, that could be the first part of our Seawatch Trail? If you're making it five feet across, you should, you know, look into that.
Yeah, we did discuss that with Alan Botham, and I think we are recommending the extended pipe, so that gives us a longer shoulder. So if and when Seawatch does go through, it could be worked into that plan a lot easier than having that concrete head wall there.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Dawn, I heard you mention that the municipality should compensate the county for their drain if we go ahead with this. Do you have a ballpark idea what you think that value would be worth?
It's very ballpark. I think it's in the order of about $60,000 is what it's worth. But because it's in poor shape and it's very old, it'll probably be somewhat less. If you put a brand-new one in, it would be about $60,000. So what we're going to compensate for is not a brand-new one. It'll -- it's -- we'll evaluate the condition and pay accordingly.
And Counselor Hammond.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. Dawn, or my question could be for you, Luanne. Based on the serious nature of this report, I mean, it's something that's been there since 2014, and I'm wondering how long or when can we anticipate a final report coming forward, and hence, when can the work be done if we go through with this?
Okay. As I said, basically, we need permits from M&amp;R, Ministry of Natural Resources, and also IRCA will have some involvement in it. And so that'll be the biggest delay. I'm hoping that probably by the end of, well, this time next year, we should have a final report approved. That's the goal, anyway.
Wheels of government turn slowly, don't they? So is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this? No one? Okay. It's too early. So, Luanne, the recommendations are...
Yes, the recommendation in front of you is everything that Dawn had highlighted, and I just want to add one more, item number G, if Corinna doesn't mind adding this, retaining wall for the Mr. and Mrs. Goral property.
I have another question here from Mr. Jacobs before we make the...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, if I may. With the -- your delay, you're saying it's almost a year before this could be taken under construction. But we know that right at the Goral property that you have a, I guess, a substantial washaway there. Will that survive a year, or do we need to have to shore that up prior to the year-long wait?
It'll be monitored. I don't believe it's going to be an imminent problem, so I think a year should be okay.
In the event it does start rapidly, say we all -- with these rains that we're getting now, like they're heavy...
Yeah, we'd have to look at that. If some -- if there's an emergency repair required, yeah, we can notify OMAFRA and probably get approval to do something.
As amended with what Luanne just said, seconded by Counselor Jacobs. All in favor -- comments, questions?
Seconded by Counselor Jacobs.
Pardon me. Counselor Jacobs, seconded by Counselor Hammond. Sorry if I misspoke. All in favor? And that's carried. So this public meeting is now closed, and we'll move on to the next public meeting. And that will be the one to consider the zoning bylaw amendment for One Pickwick Drive. Thank you. Danielle?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, members of council. This is the public meeting for consideration of a zoning bylaw amendment for property located at One Pickwick Drive, which is the vacant lot on the southwest corner of Pickwick Drive and Oak Street East, and it is owned by the Leamington United Minonite Home. So this property is designated residential in the official plan. It's currently split-zoned R2 and R4-5. The northern portion of this property is zoned R2, and that permits a variety of low-density structures, so single-detached semis, two-unit houses. The remainder of this property is site-specifically zoned R4-5, and that site-specific zoning permits a little bit of a higher-density-type structure, so townhouses, low-rise apartments less than three stories. And then this piece of property specifically allows a recreation and a heritage center. So the R4 zoning, it also applies to the properties that are south of the subject lands. So that is 29 and 31 Pickwick Drive. These lands have been developed with a low-rise residential unit, so that's the Leamington Minonite Home dwelling units, as well as their heritage center. The R4-5 zoning on those properties will remain in place and is not being changed this evening, so it's only the R4-5 on the property that's highlighted on the screen. So this application is being brought forward to rezone that property from R2 and R4-5 to a site-specific R2 zone. That will allow the Minonite Home to construct three buildings, each with two units, two units each. From the outside, they're going to look like they're semi-detached dwelling units, but they are going to be on one piece of property. A copy of the site plan has been attached to the report, so that sort of shows you the orientation of the units. So in addition to allowing this type of structure, so the three buildings, the zoning will also establish site-specific setbacks from all the property lines. It'll increase the lot coverage for the property, and it'll allow each unit to have an individual driveway onto Pickwick. So in considering these applications, we have had regard to the relevant planning legislation as well as the approved documents, including the PPS and the county official plan. The proposal that's been brought forward fulfills the policies and directions of each of these documents by providing appropriate residential intensification through an infilling opportunity on a currently vacant site that's in an urban area. It has access to services and land uses that are complementary and necessary to residential development. As well, the residential policies of the Leamington OP encourage residential intensification where it can be demonstrated that there's the appropriate level of servicing and where the property can be adequately accessed, and it'll result in a density and built form that is complementary to the surrounding area. So this proposal is seen to conform to the residential land use policies of the Leamington OP. So what the amendment's really looking to do, it's going to change the zoning on One Pickwick Drive from R2 and R4-5 to R2-13. And that site-specific zoning is going to say that they can allow three separate buildings, each with two units each, to be constructed on one piece of property. The bylaw amendment will also establish the setbacks for the front, rear, and side yards at the distances that are listed in the report. I do note that this is a corner lot, and so the setbacks are determined based on the definitions in the zoning bylaw. So what someone on Pickwick Drive, so if you were standing on Pickwick, you would see as the front yard of a unit. Planning technically sees that as a side yard. So I've added some street references to what's listed in the report so that you can see the front yard. What a person standing on Pickwick would think is someone's front yard is an exterior side yard, so they're a little bit -- they're different than what you would normally see for a front yard, but we feel that they're appropriate. So essentially, we're creating a building envelope for the buildings to be located in. The amendment will not establish the setback distances between the building units. That's going to be addressed as part of the building code review, and so it'll ensure that there's appropriate access in between each of those units. The amendment also seeks to increase the lot coverage from 40 percent to 45 percent. This increase is really viewed as a reflection of the number of units that we have on the property, so it's increased. It's more than two, and that's what the 40 is based on, as well as the size of each unit. Administration has seen a number of requests come forward for increased lot coverage on townhouses, two-unit and semi-detached units. Essentially, what we're seeing is normally when we'd see a patio built off the back of these units, they're now being incorporated into the footprint as a covered patio. So the zoning bylaw will need to consider that in the next go-round, that this is now a trend. But despite that increase, we can say that these lots are still -- will be able to handle the drainage appropriately. They'll still have the appropriate setbacks between the units and the surrounding units, as well as have an appropriate building mass, so they'll still fit the size of the property. This bylaw will also permit each unit to have an individual access onto Pickwick Drive. Typically, you would be restricted to two driveways. So if you had a piece of property with seven units laid out in a parking lot, you would have a driveway in, a driveway out, or maybe one in. But because of how the proposed units are laid out, they're essentially laid out to be individual units, we've reviewed the location and the widths of each of those driveways. They've deemed -- or engineering has reviewed them. They are appropriate, and they'll be restricted within the required site plan agreement. So this bylaw will say, despite the provision that you can only have two driveways, you are allowed to have seven, in this case, subject to site plan approval. In addition to the standard R2-zone provisions which apply to this property, the property is also subject to Section 4.49 of the zoning bylaw. And what that section does is it requires a setback from a municipal drain. So the Sunparlor Drain runs from Oak Street at the north end of the property all the way along the western edge of the property or the property line right through to the southern part of it. That's the southern -- or the Sunparlor Drain. It is an enclosed drain, so it's underground. We don't see it. And that section requires that all structures are three meters from the center of that drain on both sides. So we have this drain that runs down the side of the property. Buildings are required to be set back from them. The application that was submitted by the Leamington Minonite Home did include a request to have a zero setback, and if you look at the site plan, it is showing that some of those units, depending on where they are along the drain, are located or were shown to be located right on that drain. So they're asking to be a zero setback from the center line of the drain. At the time that the report was written, we did not have the information to support that request, and so it was recommended -- it was not recommended as part of this. Since that time, the request... Since that time, the requested engineering drawings and plans have been received by engineering and reviewed by engineering. Engineering is in a position to support the requested setback of zero from the drain based on the drawings that were provided. They did note that the drawings have been reviewed in the context of the engineering drainage and have not been reviewed in the context of the building code. So the applicant may still need to change things based on the building code. It is recommended that the bylaw that's being considered this evening be amended to include the requested setback from the Sunparlor Drain now that we do have that supporting information. So these provisions that have all been listed, they will be implemented through the review and the approval of a site plan application. That site plan application will also implement some buffering. There's a parking lot at the one end. We'll also, as noted, we'll have to stipulate where the driveways and the widths of the driveway. So that's in process. We have received that application. So tonight is the public meeting. We are looking to receive comments from any of the public or council with respect to the zoning bylaw, as well as anything that may be able to be implemented into the site plan application. But based on the information we've received to date, administration is of the opinion that the proposed zoning application to permit three, to permit three two-unit dwellings, including setbacks, lot coverage, driveways, as well as the requested setback from the drain, can be supported. So the recommendation this evening is to approve the, is to approve the zoning amendment application, and that the bylaw being brought forward as amended to include the setback be approved this evening.
Thank you, Danielle. Before we go to the public, is there anyone on council that has a question or a comment? Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Madam Chair. Danielle, my question is regarding to, instead of the request to increase the lot coverage, would not be allowed, but when it comes to sheds, can you speak to that, especially with 10 by 10 sheds now you're requiring a building permit? Thank you.
So under the zoning bylaw, even if you don't need a building permit, so a shed smaller than 108 square feet, is still considered a structure, and so it still is calculated in the lot coverage. So in this case, they've asked for the maximum to allow for the maximum coverage of the units. It wouldn't accommodate additional accessory units. And I would believe in this case, because of the drain location, they would also not be able to permit them on top of the drain.
Okay, thank you. Answer your question. Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak to this? No one? Council, what are your wishes? Moved as amended to include the setback from the drains. Moved by Counselor Hammond, seconded by Counselor Dunn. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. And we'll close that public meeting and open the next one. Thank you, Danielle. The next one is consent application and zoning bylaw amendment for Mercy Road 12. And that will be Heather bringing that forward.
This is an application for, combined application actually, for my consent and rezoning for the property at 1049 Mercy Road 12. The property is actually on the southwest corner of Mercy Road 12 and Mercy Road 11, and it comprises a farm having an area of 21 hectares, which is 52 acres. On this property right now are a single-detached dwelling and two accessory buildings, including a barn and a shed. The municipality of Leamington's official plan designates the property agricultural, and the lands are zoned agricultural general A1 under our zoning bylaw. And the applicants are actually proposing to create a surplus dwelling lot, which would have a lot area of approximately 0.348 hectares, which is 0.861 acres. The existing single-detached dwelling on the property has been deemed surplus to the needs of the current owners of the farm, and they would like to sell it. The parcel that will be retained if the lot is severed would then have an area of approximately 20.6 hectares or 50.9 acres. We've reviewed the application for conformity with the various planning documents. My opinion that this application is consistent with the provincial policy statement, and it's also conforming to the policies of the County of Essex Official Plan regarding agricultural severances. Leamington's official plan has a number of policies that need to be reviewed as well, and I've looked at all of those, and it's my position that it conforms with all of them, or can conform to all of them, by way of a number of conditions. One of the conditions that is a standard condition is that the property is to be owned by the property owner for at least one year prior to the lands being severed. In the past in Leamington, this has been interpreted such that the property couldn't transfer to a different owner until one year had passed, so people could still apply to the committee of adjustment or now to council for such severances. We have a problem this evening because the current owner has a closing date of October of this year to sell and transfer that ownership. I'm going to get, I'll let Suzanne speak to that at the appropriate time, but I want to give a little bit of background information regarding this particular condition. The purpose of this condition was to discourage these types of severances in the past in agricultural areas. It's my understanding that there were further single-detached dwellings or residential development occurring on the retained parcels. So it was thought that by requiring the owner to own for a year before they could sever that, you wouldn't get that speculation where people would buy it in order just to sever it. This condition is not used by any of the other local municipalities, to my knowledge. It's also not mentioned in the provincial policy statement or the county official plan, both of which are recently updated documents. As my report indicates, the Leamington official plan policies regarding severances will be updated as well. That's in the works as part of the official plan review that's going on. I'm anticipating that this particular requirement will not be in the next version. I'm anticipating that. I can't tell you 100% for sure at this point. It's my position that a surplus dwelling lot severance either conforms to the policies or it doesn't conform to the policies. And nowadays, we are rezoning the retained parcels in order to make sure that no further residential development can take place on that property. So we have another way of dealing with that. Going back to my report, we did circulate the application to the various municipal departments and government agencies. We had no objections received on, from any of those groups. And we also circulated to the neighbors with public notice and did not receive any feedback in that regard. The retained parcel will be rezoned to A1-11, which is a category that we recently created for one of the other surplus dwelling lot severances, and that will prohibit any residential development from occurring on the retained parcel. The surplus dwelling lot is proposed to be rezoned to A5, which is our agricultural residential zone that we use on a regular basis. And each of the two parcels will conform to the applicable zoning regulations.
Thank you, Heather. Suzanne, would you like to speak next, and then we can have council ask questions if they have any?
If I may.
Certainly.
(bell) Sorry. Sorry, 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 again. I'm not...
Thank you for your input.
Okay, how do I make her, how do I make her go back on? Okay, I'm sorry. There's new buttons. I don't have those over there. Okay. Please...
Can you hear me? Yes. There we go. All right. I won't touch it. All right. Good evening. Yes, I did have an opportunity to have a conversation with the municipal planner today regarding condition three. That's the only condition that I wanted to speak to today on behalf of the property owner. It is true, we do have an agreement of purchase and sale in place, and the purchaser is looking to arrange financing and take care of those things and have a closing now rather than waiting till the new year. As Ms. Jablonski indicated, the Leamington's official plan is a little bit different than other policy, policies in the area. The provincial policy, the county policy, other municipalities don't have this requirement that you have to own the land for a year before you can sever the surplus dwelling. You know, the rationale, whether it was to prevent development or hinder competing or competing uses to property, my understanding is that it is somewhat archaic. It hasn't really done what it's supposed to do, and for that reason, hasn't been carried forward in other, in other policies of other governments. In this particular case, to have us wait now till February to be able to register the transfer seems unnecessary, and I doubt would really have any impact at all in terms of dealing with severances. The request is that that be one condition that you allow, or to strike from the conditions that we be required to wait until February in order to be able to finalize a severance. I would point out that the owner is quite happy to provide an undertaking to the town, that they promised that they will continue to own the retained lands till at least February 10th. It's my understanding, they have no intention of selling it. They bought the farm because they're farmers and they intended to farm the property. They simply don't need the house. So they would be more than happy to provide whatever undertaking the town would like to ensure that there isn't any speculation on the remainder of the farm. In addition, I would point out that sections of the official plan do provide that it is really meant for reference. It's a guide. It's not to be strictly interpreted, and council does have the authority to make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of council, start with Mr. Rubiki.
We're the acting mayor. I have no problem with this. However, there are some that are on the books now that we've said no to, so I don't know. Legal's not here, and I don't want to put Ed on the spot, and I'm going to ask Mr. Neufeld what his opinion is of this.
Thank you, Counselor Rubiki. You've pointed it out quite accurately. And while Heather won't say that this will be removed from our submission to council for the official plan, I will. You won't see this provision when we bring it forward, unfortunately, as Counselor Rubiki has stated. It still is on the books. It is the, is the way that we've been applying this. And as recently as a few months ago, I think we sat right here in an evening and council had essentially said, we are, we understand the argument, but this is the rule that's on the books. And for consistency, at that time, council chose not to allow for the variation away from the rule. Of course, it is council's discretion, but if council wishes to maintain consistency, even in the face of future changes, it would apply the rule the same way.
Counselor Rubiki?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Redon. I guess, Peter, what I'm asking you now is, when? When do you see this coming through? I mean, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but since 2010, we've been talking about an official plan. I don't know, maybe the next council can do it? Are we going to be privy to doing this, our official plan before this turns up?
At this point, it's, it is my very strong hope that we will have this official plan amendment, the five-year plan, before council early next year in 2018.
I'm looking for a timeline. I mean, I know they've got, I mean, this happened in another incident, too, where a guy's house was sold, and he was a little upset. I don't know what's going to happen here now, but I mean, if this is going to go, wait now till February or March, if this goes through in the bylaw, then they can, they have to do this all over again?
Well, I may not be understanding correctly, but my understanding is that they will have owned it for a year in February, early in 2018. So regardless of the amount of time, regardless of the time that the official plan, five-year official plan is brought to council early in 2018, this process would be able to continue regardless.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on Counselor Rubiki there, excuse me. He said, is there any legal ramifications that if we denied them previously and you okayed this one, is there a recourse to come back to us from previous denials?
Is there legal recourse? I think that this is within the council provision, council's discretion, and as such, can make that decision. That's why I was carefully choosing my words, that if council chooses, wants to be consistent, then it will want to apply the bylaw as it's written.
Further to that?
Yeah, so basically, you're not really answering what I'm asking, so...
I went to law school for five or years or something to not be able to answer these questions. I think I am answering the question. Council has a discretion to make the decision as requested. However, to remain consistent, if council wants to remain consistent, it would simply say, no, we're not going to allow this to, this part of the bylaw to be ignored.
I have Counselor Hammond next.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. But I guess not to belabor that point much longer than, given the fact that it's going to be changed based on the information that's been given. Do we know of any that are sitting there right now with less than a year's date on that we could go back on? And if the decision is... Let me try that again. Tonight, if we make the decision to move forward and allow this severance to take place, are there some sitting back there on the books with less than a year's date that we could go back and make the same compensation for?
Ed, did you want, did you want to speak to that?
I don't think the council is necessarily bound by the previous case. Looking at it, I guess with fresh eyes, because I wasn't here when that came before council, the fact that there's both a rezoning of the retained portion, which puts a freeze on building, and there's an undertaking by this individual saying that they will own this property past the February 2018 date, seemed to me to open the door for council to approve this application if it's, if it's outfit to do so without feeling that it was bound by any previous decision.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Madam Chair. I agree with Ed in the fact that the majority of the lands are going to be retained more than a year, so we, I feel I would support this. But I do have another question for Heather regarding the barn. Is that barn, is there any stipulation regarding the barn, the pole barn on that? I know there's certain requirements for pole barns, depending on how the size, that can't be, you don't require them to remain on residential land going with the farm?
Through you, Your Worship. We want to encourage the agricultural buildings to stay with the agricultural properties wherever possible, but there are situations where the farmer has no use for it, and they are choosing not to keep it. Or in this case, the buyer is interested in that, the agricultural building. My understanding is it's not being used as an agricultural building at this time. My understanding is it's not being used as an agricultural building at this time.
No, this is a public meeting, and I'm not done this discussion yet, if you don't mind. No, no, I don't mean to reprimand. We will go to the public, but I want, I would like to hear what Council Wilkinson says, and I still have a comment as well, but I'll let you have yours before me.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I struggle with this one. We've burned some people in the past here that were, are going to be pretty upset if we allow this to go through tonight. And, you know, I just wonder why we didn't extend this same courtesy to those in the past? Why is it, why do we have kind of a change of heart here tonight that we're, we're allowing options like this versus in the past? Because I got a feeling if this gets out there, you know, this one gentleman I'm thinking of in particular, he's going to call and say, what happened here? How come mine wasn't granted the same type of courtesy? So I struggle with this. I, I do like what Ed said, how he pointed out that they'll take this out to February to make it somewhat fathomable to accept, but I would have liked that same courtesy to have been extended to others in the past. That's where I struggle with it.
Mr. Neufeld, did you want to answer that?
I understand, I understand your position, Councilor Wilkinson. I think that what's different here is that they have found a way to essentially distinguish themselves from the way that it was presented previously. I don't remember previous councils providing this kind of a, an assurance or an undertaking not to present the deed prior to the one-year basis. So essentially, they are meeting the condition. Why it hasn't come up before, and I don't remember it coming up before, I'm, I'm not sure, but now that it has been presented, it is a way of distinguishing this case from, from the previous ones.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
I just want to remind my fellow colleagues, I believe that we quoted the official plan, and we said this was in our official plan, and we were not going to make changes. And it may be legal, but I have to look that gentleman in the face and tell him why I changed my mind. And that's where I have a problem. We took this document and we pretty much waved it in his face, and even if you are making some alterations that can make it legal and somewhat palatable, I still have to answer to that gentleman because we didn't help him find a loophole, if you will. And for that reason, I can't support that, regardless of the fact that we're changing it. And he brought that up to us on numerous occasions, you're going to change this, I've heard this, you're going to change it, why will you not change it for me? And we said, no, because we went back to our printed document that was decided however many years ago, and that was going to be our policy. So that, that's the reason I can't do it. I, I think it's fantastic when you can find a way around it, but we did not help anyone else find another way. Anyway, for that, I will take it to the public. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak to this at all? Okay, I see no, no one here. Council, what, what would you like to do on this? Council Rubiki, are you speaking to the matter, or are you making a motion?
No, no, I'm just going to speak to the matter. What does the recommendation actually say, in layman's terms?
Can I take that to you, Heather, please?
Yes, your worship. The first recommendation is that approval of the consent application to create a .348 or hectare or .861 acre surplus dwelling lot be approved, subject to all the conditions. And the conditions do include the one-year timeframe for the sale of the property. The second part of it is to approve the zoning change from A1 to A5 for the surplus dwelling lot. The third part is to change the zoning of the retained parcel by adding the A1 point or A1-11, which is a site-specific zoning category that prohibits residential development, and that will apply to the retained parcel only. And then the last recommendation states that if no concerns are raised, that the amending bylaw be adopted or be considered this evening.
I just, thanks, worthy mayor. I didn't, I didn't see that in there, or can you mention it, or should we put it in for the recommendation about the one year or the date or February? I'd like to see that in there.
We're adding that? Did you want to read that for us, so we know exactly what we're, what the recommendation is before we move forward with a motion and then a vote?
We'd be adding one more bullet point, and I'll look to Ms. Balzer as well to, to aid here if I'm not getting it exactly right, but that the deed will not be presented to the municipality before one-year timeframe.
I believe the condition already states, if, if what you're looking to do is, is confirm the official plan as opposed to granting the request that we've made, the condition says the applicant shall submit no earlier than February 10, 2018, a transfer in triplicate. So that prevents me, that's condition number three in Schedule A. So I think it's unlikely, or it's unnecessary for you to add a provision in there. What I was requesting was that you delete the words "no earlier than February 10, 2018" and instead add a provision where the owner provided a written undertaking not to transfer the retained lands until after that date, so that, in fact, they would retain that one-year period on the retained lands. If I may, Madam Chair, may I point out one other, there is one other item that might distinguish this case and might be helpful to council. This particular property is almost 52 acres, and there was an option before severing these lands and allowing a building freeze to be applied to the entire retained lands, which is almost 51 acres. There was the opportunity to, in fact, sever the farm, split the farm in two, so that the, what would be the west farm would be completely independent from the farm with the residents, and there would therefore be no building freeze which would have been applied to that farm. In discussion with the owner, he, or they made the decision that they would allow a building freeze to go on the entire property in an effort to support the future policies of larger farms, which is, which seems to be the trend now, both provincially and in our county. And on that basis, they, they essentially gave up something in an effort to support that kind of policy. I wonder whether or not that would be something that council could consider in allowing, in this case, instead of a delay in presenting the deed, instead accepting this particular property owner's undertaking to not sell the retained land or any part of it on or before February 10th.
Thank you, Ms. Balzer. Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Ms. Balzer, I mean, it begs the question that what's the harm in waiting? The other gentleman that I think that we're referring to, I think all of us are referring to, found a bit of a loophole around that. I think that the prospective buyer just leased the place for a period of time, and I'm, I'm assuming that's what happened. So to my question, what is the difficulty in just waiting till February 10th?
And that's a fair question, and we have, we have the, the person who's going to be purchasing the property is actually residing in the property now, so it is occupied. There were two reasons for the, for this. Number one, interest rates are very good right now, and the buyer wishes to finance the purchase, and if we wait until February, then to be able to lock in an interest rate at a favorable rate might be, might be difficult. In addition to that, this farmer actually wishes to invest in another farm and, and would like to utilize these resources. So on that basis, it was, we've requested that you exercise your discretion in applying these guiding, these guiding policies. I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily characterize them as rules, but rather guides, and on that basis, we were asking you to apply the guide a little bit differently.
Council Rubiki?
We're the mayor. I guess I'm going to go case by case, and I know what's happened in the past has happened, but there was also another severance on that farm. I'm going to move the recommendation.
Seconded by Councilor Jacobs. All in favor? Opposed? Yes, the motion is defeated. So those that voted against it? I'm asking, do we move on? It failed. But we, can we give direction to what's, what these folks are supposed to do next? Do they know?
Madam Chair, is the, is the severance granted? Because we, the only request was that this condition be amended. There was never a suggestion here that if we didn't, if you were not prepared to grant that amendment, that we were not proceeding with the severance. So I would take it that there would be two decisions. Number one, is the severance granted, yes or no? And number two, what are the conditions going to look like? And if they're going to look like Schedule A, then that's the decision, and then it's my client's decision. If we don't, we don't ever have to present you with a deed if we don't like it.
Ms. Balzer has taken you exactly where I, it took me a little bit, where are we going with this now? But she's quite right. The request was to change the conditions. Now, now we're asking, or they, it appeared though that we moved the, the recommendation, and the recommendation failed. But as Ms. Balzer described it, was council approving the requested change, or was council voting on the recommendation that was brought forward? With, without the, with or without the requested amendment of, of Ms. Balzer?
What was presented and what you added?
I'm, I'm looking at Heather, and I'm thinking Heather has comment too.
Through you, your worship, if I could clarify, the recommendation as it sits in my report includes the one year from the time that the property was purchased. Now, is that the motion that was made, that the one-year period be imposed? Is that the motion that was just made?
Yes, and, and what, where the, I think where the confusion has come, and, and Ms. Balzer is quite right, the addition that we had, that council had talked about, including that the deed not be presented, was already a condition inside of, inside this. Ms. Balzer was asking for that provision to be changed. If I understand it correctly, council is, is looking and saying, was, was voting on whether or not to accept a change to this, and so the, the vote was defeated to change it as requested by Ms. Balzer, in which case now we come back to the recommendations as provided in this report, that the severance can move forward, but that the, that the deed cannot be presented before February 10th.
My apologies, when I saw the hands raised, I actually thought that the, the change, the motion to change it, I, I thought that I saw more hands than those opposed to changing it. I, I.
It was an even, it was an even split. Question, Mr. Rubiki?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So can she go back now to the splitting that farm in half, 25 and 25? And then she could sell the farm and sell the house, and then they could possibly put another, another dwelling on the retained 25 for a new landowner or a retirement home? I mean, if you don't want to create a lot, but possibly there's, there's a way to create a lot.
My, my suggestion at this point is that there is a recommendation before council with respect to the, with respect to the severance, and that includes all of the, the recommendation includes all of the conditions as presented in this report without change. And that, I think that is what is before council at this point.
If I might, your worship? So you're, you're basically going back to what you had in front of you at the beginning. You're also being asked to pass on something that's consistent with what has happened in the past, having this restriction on presenting the new deed until the years pass. So you're not, you are being asked to pass on something that's consistent with a previous case that you alluded to.
Yes, I would agree with that, that if you were, when you consider this, recommendations before you now, if you pass it as it, as it is presented, you will be remaining consistent with the decisions that you have made in the past as it relates to this particular topic, even given consideration to the distinguishing features that Ms. Balzer has raised, you would be consistent here.
So another motion? Now, does that have to be made by someone? It can be made by anyone. Okay, council? Moved by Councilor Jacobs, seconded by Councilor Dunn. Comments or questions? Council Hammond? So that they will wait till the one-year mark? I think where we got mixed up was because we went from Ms. Jablonski to Ms. Swatzky. I think that's where we got.
It's your fault.
No, it isn't fault, but I think that's where, that it got lost in translation. So, all in favor of the recommendation then?
As presented.
Opposed? As presented. Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you and I apologize for the mass confusion. And with that, that public meeting is closed and we will move on to the one that's considering consent application, and that is for, is that Mercy Road 12? No, we've moved on to Mercy Road 5. And that as well is planning. Madeline? Sorry, go ahead, Madeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Deputy Mayor, council members. So, tonight I'm bringing forward a report regarding a combined consent and zoning bylaw amendment application. That's been brought forward by 705 Mercy Road 5 owned by Highland Produce Limited. And this combined consent and zoning bylaw amendment application is essentially to sever a portion of 705 Mercy Road 5 and to add it to the address 514 Highway 77, which is owned by South Point Fabrication. So, the report recommends the provisional approval of consent application B 2217 to sever 0.27 hectares parcel of land from 705 Mercy Road 5 and to add it to 514 Highway 77. Also, to allow for a zoning bylaw amendment application to change the severed portion of the parcel from its current zoning, which is A3, to the zoning of 514 Highway 77. That's a C4. So, with regards to this application, I think the background really is for South Point Fabrication to be allowed to acquire a little bit more land to grow their business in Leamington. South Point Fabrication actually is a business that works often with the agricultural suppliers, so it works really well in this area. The application, as I mentioned before, is to sever 0.27 hectares of land from 705 Mercy Road 5 and add it to 514 Highway 77. This application was circulated within the 400-foot radius for the neighbors to get comment on September 5th. It was also circulated internally and externally to agencies and departments. The administration supports this application for a couple of different reasons. The first reason is that 705 Mercy Road 5, although it is zoned, as I mentioned before, an A3, which is agricultural hobby farm, it is designated through the official plan as a Highway 77 commercial corridor. And therefore, this consent application is not to conform with our agricultural severances. It's more of a straightforward consent application and it conforms with the PPS and the County of Essex official plan and our official plan, which basically allow for boundary adjustments to be made and consent applications to go forward, as long as they're not within the agricultural official plan designation, which this one is not. Additionally, it conforms with the provincial policy statement, the County of Essex and Leamington's official plan by promoting the growth of employment areas, providing diverse employment opportunities, and also by allowing for the responsible development of the land. As I mentioned before, 514 Highway 77, in which this severed land will be added to, is within the Highway 77 corridor commercial official plan designation. And it will sort of bolster the employment area as per what the official plan is really kind of going for there. Additionally, in the zoning bylaw amendment, again, as I mentioned before, 705 Mercy Road 5 is zoned A3. The retained parcel will conform with the A3 as it does currently. And the severed portion of the lands, when they are consolidated and added to 514 Highway 77, will be rezoned to the current zoning of 514 Highway 77, which is C4, a highway commercial. And that way, South Point Fabrication can really use those lands to their best potential. Additionally, we haven't heard any comments from neighbors yet, but we do have a public consultation this evening. And from the internal and external agencies, the only comments that we received were from ERCA. As you can see, on the north portion of the 705 Mercy Road 5, there is an open drain, so they just wanted to make note that any development that happens within that area, ERCA is circulated on. As you can see, the severed lands are quite a ways away from that, so it doesn't really have a potential impact there. But they did want to make note that that does exist. So, the purpose of the public meeting is to provide an opportunity for comments with respect to the proposed lot addition and concurrent rezoning. And subject to receiving comments from the public, administration is in a position to state that the application as proposed, one, conforms with the land division policies of Section 5.4 of our official plan, subject to conditions outlined in Schedule A of the report, which really just highlights that the pins are consolidated when it's added, that the drainage is correct and that sort of thing. Two, conform with the land use policies of Section 3.6 of our official plan, as per the conditions outlined in the report. Three, are consistent with the direction of the PPS. And four, satisfy the criteria to be considered when amending the zoning bylaw. If concerns are raised at the public meeting tonight, a further report can be presented to counsel from administration, noting the effect of the comments that were received with respect to the consideration of these applications. If no concerns are raised, it is requested that counsel consider granting provisional consent for the requested lot addition, as well as approving the amending bylaw the same night as the public meeting, which is this evening.
Thank you, Madeline. Before we move to the public, are there questions? Counselor Verbeke?
We're the deputy mayor. I'm glad she came out and said this is straightforward, so.
I know. I breathe a sigh of relief myself, Counselor Hammond.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. I've spoken a number of times to the owners of South Point Fabrication and they wanted to extend their appreciation for the efforts put forward by planning, Madeline and Heather's, of course, gone and Danielle. They've been working on this for quite some time and they're anxious to move forward. So, anyway, thank you. On their behalf, I'll move for the acceptance of the report.
Moved by Counselor Hammond, seconded by Counselor Dunn. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Sorry now. I wrote the letters in giant format. Still missed it. Is there anyone here from the public to speak to that? I see there's no one there. So, again, moved by Counselor Hammond, seconded by Counselor Dunn with a question.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just, Madeline, it's regarding page 57. It says Highland Mushrooms Limited. And back on page 60, it says Highland Produce Limited. I don't know if that makes a difference when it comes to the actual reality of it or not, but is it more in the same?
I believe it's Highland Produce Limited, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for putting that out.
All in favor then? And that's carried. And that public meeting is closed. In fact, all the public meetings are closed. We are going to move, with my colleague's permission, 11.6 regarding the bank theater. We've got a nice-sized group from there and they've been very patient to sit through this rather dry information. So, if that's okay with the rest of you, we'll bring that report forward. Okay.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, members of council. In October of 2016, council approved an $8,500 grant to the Sun Parlor Players for a schematic design study for the bank theater. And that schematic design study was to prepare a visionary document for the facility, given the intended outcomes, ultimate intended outcomes of the facility. So, that schematic design study was completed and then the bank theater subsequently moved into a master planning exercise for the facility, which is the logical next step after you complete a visionary exercise. However, as part of the master planning exercise, the bank theater also had to, Sun Parlor Players also had to design specifically the next phase of their renovation. And they were required to do that because of the timing of a grant that they had received, a Canada 150 grant. And that grant requires that the Phase 3 of their construction be completed by March 31st of 2018. And so, in working with the theater group, there is a request before counsel to grant $25,000 to the group specifically for the master planning component of the architect's engagement. Essentially, that will bring a more refined budget, a more refined design to the facility, and really lay out sort of that final vision and that benchmark as to what the group has to work towards, both in construction and fundraising. If counsel permits the $25,000 grant, it will also allow the Sun Parlor Players to use their existing funds towards the construction, which is then cost shared 50% with the federal government, as opposed to having to spend their funds now, which would be dollar-for-dollar their money and still have to raise the money for 50% of their Phase 3 construction. So, the recommendation before counsel is that counsel approve the $25,000 grant for the master planning exercise and that the cultural arts reserve be used to fund the initiative.
Great. Thank you, Rob. Are there comments or are there questions? Counselor Hammond?
And you knew I would. Thank you.
Well, yes.
A comment that I'm gonna move the motion to be accepted, but just with a comment that I think that, and I want to mention now, the big reveal that's coming up on October the 14th, you'll see where this money has gone to with respect to the plans that have been put together and the excitement that's around what these plans are gonna develop. So, on behalf of all the people sitting here from the bank theater, I want to put that out there that we're hoping all of counsel and everyone will attend this big reveal on October the 14th. And I've already moved the acceptance of the report.
Seconded by Counselor Dunn. Further comments or further questions? Nothing? All in favor? And that's carried. Go on, out there and get the job done. Thank you. So, now we're moving on to the drainage, the appointment of the drainage commissioners and the annual meetings report. Luann?
Thank you. I'm asking counsel tonight to receive the 2016 annual meeting minutes of the various drainage schemes and appoint the commissioners and pump operators as commissioners under the Drainage Act. I think there's about 15 names in total and that we're asking counsel to consider bylaw 6617 to appoint the commissioners and establish the annual fees on the municipal drainage schemes. Annual drainage scheme meetings are conducted to consider matters relative to drainage schemes pursuant to the Drainage Act. Copies of the minutes, of the annual minutes are attached and for your review. Included in them is comments of repairs that are needed at the pump station, any future work for 2018, such as a new engine, like we installed last year on the West Marsh Pump Station. All these meetings are held. All landowners are invited within the scheme to attend and address any concerns at the time that they may have. At that time, we also appoint new pump operators or commissioners to the schemes. And in this case, this year, we have no new pump operators or commissioners. All the ones are existing. This report was delayed due to the fact that we wanted all of the pump operators and commissioners to receive fall arrest training. They have all received it, but one. So, therefore, that person is no longer going to be working for me, but everyone else has. And all the cost relative to the training and all the cost of these pump stations is handled through the Drainage Act process, financed through the municipality and then billed back to the landowners at the end of every year. That's basically it.
Thank you, Luann. Are there questions? Moved by Counselor Verbeke, seconded by Counselor Jacobs. There are no comments or questions? Oh, there is something from the CAO.
On an annual basis, I have to declare that there's no conflict here. There is someone using my name. That reference to Peter Neufeld at the West Marsh, Marsh Commissioner, Pumper, is not me. It is someone with a similar name.
We have a question. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, you referred that one refused to take the training and I know before there's been some pushback as far as health and safety and all this other stuff. Is it moving along quite nicely now or is it still like arm twisting?
Yes. Last year, we did a review with Ruth, our solicitor and an outside lawyer, and we did get a determination on what they should and shouldn't do. So, we now provide them with a handbook, basically like a health and safety handbook that they have to read and sign off on. But then there is some training that we still provide. As long as they take the training, they can still work for the municipality then.
And if I may, Deputy Mayor, the restrictions, like wearing harnesses when they're cleaning out the pits and so forth, is anyone monitoring this? I'm not saying they're not doing it, but I mean to be...
Well, I can say they're not doing it right now. They just finished the training. So, we just have to... We installed the harness systems about a year ago, but some of them we just want to confirm are installed properly before they start using them. So, we're looking at probably a month before they can actually start using the harness systems.
Okay. That's not the answer I wanted to hear, but I guess that's okay.
In the meantime, they're wearing life jackets.
Okay, thank you.
Another question? Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Madam Chair. Luann, my question is regarding the commissioners and pumpers. What is the difference?
Okay. So, again, after the review with the lawyer that we had last year, we have determined that the pump operators considered aren't appointed by counsel, therefore should not be on the property. So, between Ruth and I and the outside lawyer, we did determine that we should consider them all as commissioners. This way, they're all appointed by you to be able to enter the property. So, they all have that authority. However, a commissioner deemed as kind of like the boss in the field. It's his role to make sure all the pumpers are working. Somebody is there during a storm event and he purchases the fuel, sets up the time for a mechanic to come in and review the pumps and the engine's maintenance as normal. Pump operator strictly just pumps. You're welcome.
I'll call the question then. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, Luann. Now, we're moving on to the North Leamington Stormwater Master Drainage Study and I believe, Alan, that's you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Stormwater management in Leamington and Essex County is a primary component of a diligent development process. The flat topography and soil conditions within Leamington are such that any changes to drainage patterns and/or volumes can cause flooding, erosion and sedimentation of drains. With the introduction and continued construction of greenhouse-style farming, the volume of runoff in certain areas of Leamington is continually increasing. And these increases in runoff from Leamington properties are impacting drainage systems in Leamington and the neighboring towns of Lake Shore and Kingsville. Climate change is evident in recent rain events in the town of Essex, the town of Tecumseh and the city of Windsor, noting principally the frequency and intensity of storm events. And all of the above support the need for watershed management. An excerpt from the draft regional stormwater management study prepared by StanTech Consulting for the regional municipalities within Essex County and the Conservation Authority best describes the importance of watershed planning. And that's included in your report. Good planning provides a fundamental basis for addressing stormwater requirements. Stormwater planning should be undertaken by municipalities to provide economies of scale at a watershed level. In the absence of stormwater planning at a watershed level, the land developer and the consultant are often responsible to define stormwater management objectives through preconsultation with local agencies and municipalities. And this localized approach may result in the following. Watershed issues and priorities may not be correctly identified. Cumulative impacts can't be assessed at a site level without significant engineering evaluations. Regional stormwater management can't be evaluated at a localized level. Individual developments have been allowed to proceed on the basis that stormwater measures that match pre-development peak flow conditions. The rationale supporting this approach is such that post-development outflow will not exceed the pre-development outflow for the same proposed development area and thus should not create any adverse hydraulic impacts to a watershed. The issue with this approach is that pre-development conditions cannot be properly assessed at the lot-level scale. Additionally, rainwater is collected and diverted to storm... That is, collected and diverted to stormwater management ponds for eventual release into the drains reduces the amount of rainwater that permeates through the soil. of rainwater that permeates through the soil. A watershed-scale evaluation of pre-development conditions must become a standard requirement as part of development stormwater management plans. And to support this, I included some clauses from the provincial policy statement. In that policy statement 2014, it states that planning for stormwater management shall minimize or where possible prevent increases in contaminant loads, minimize changes in water balance and erosion, not increase risk to property damage, promote stormwater management best practices, including stormwater attenuation and reuse. And in section 2.1, the planning authorities shall protect and improve or restore the quality and quantity of water by using the watershed as the ecologically meaningful scale for integrated and long-term planning, minimizing potential negative impacts, including cross-jurisdictional and cross-watershed impacts, ensuring stormwater management practices minimize stormwater volumes and contaminant loads, and maintain or increase the extent of vegetative impervious So as described in a previous staff report, ENG 2716, Northeast Trunk Sewer Update, the area north of Mercy Road 6 and along Highway 77 is becoming a greenhouse cluster. Municipality and developers have a responsibility to the drainage systems that provide service between the greenhouse properties and Lake St. Clair and Lake Erie. It's no longer acceptable or possible under the PPS to review development plans focusing on the proposed development parcel and the adjacent storm drain alone or at only the lot level. To date, Leamington has managed and reviewed greenhouse developments together with the Conservation Authority, using a lot-level evaluation and lot-level controls. This practice is no longer appropriate or sustainable. Regional stormwater planning versus individual farm lot assessment should be implemented. Administration, staff from the Essex Region Conservation Authority, and staff from local consulting firms have met several times to discuss and understand this problem. Stantec Consulting has already provided some initial high-level analysis of the Reed Drainage Scheme in the municipality of Leamington, since they've been working with the authority and preparing a regional stormwater management guideline for Essex County. This regional stormwater guideline will address regional review and approval issues, such as consistency between municipalities, consultants, design, and the review process. The regional guideline will not develop individual design parameters. These design parameters are needed as soon as possible to continue with responsible design and approval of new greenhouse developments. If the municipality does not take the lead in conducting a master study, significant stormwater management review would become the responsibility of each individual developer at the time of the development. There is an immediate need to study the Silver, Reed, and Big Creek drainage systems. The Silver, Reed, and Big Creek drainage systems, as they are within the new greenhouse cluster area along Highway 77. Stantec's Windsor office has the necessary background, local knowledge, technical skills, and momentum to deliver this assignment, which includes things like culvert and drain inventory necessary for some modeling studies, topographic surveys, hydraulic and hydrologic modeling, erosion analysis, floodline mapping, and preparing the final reports and recommendations. The estimate of the fees to complete the assignment is approximately $150,000, and administration is recommending that the cost be financed from the engineering reserve. As this study is intended to specifically serve the greenhouse development sector, we're proposing a new fee to be established for all new greenhouse development that occurs within the study area to cover the cost. If the municipality does not take the lead in conducting a master study, the responsibility will be placed on the individual developers. If each developer were required to conduct the level of analysis included in the master study, the cost and the time would likely be far greater than the $1,000 per acre that we are proposing to establish. So we are recommending that council enter into a contract with Stantec Consulting to complete a North Leamington Stormwater Master Plan, that we establish a stormwater management fee of $1,000 per acre for greenhouse development within this study area, and that the study be funded from the engineering reserve.
Thank you, Alan. We have representatives from the Conservation Authority. Would you gentlemen like to speak to this at all? Mr. Bernie, Mr. Henderson? Five minutes, I have to give you the limit. No disrespect intended, just the rules.
Thank you, Your Deputy Worship. My reputation precedes me. Agriculture and agricultural development is the backbone of any municipal development activity, any municipalities' successful and sustainable development activities. The modernization and industrialization of our agricultural practice of late through greenhouse development, though, has to be looked at critically and carefully. We'd like to compliment your staff on working through this issue, your engineering department, your planning department, and Rob, Sharon especially. There's been some significant challenges to see through, and when you're dealing with these types of things in an ad hoc-type process, as Alan has identified, it just gets more challenging because there always seems to be one more thing for that single developer that they haven't considered. We proceed in this master planning process, as identified in this report, we'll have the basic fundamental criteria to deal with, and then we can deal with expeditiously proposals coming forward. So again, happy to participate, happy to facilitate, and we await further instruction from council.
Great. Mr. Henderson, did you have anything to say? No? Okay, so then we'll move on to council. Are there questions? Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's odd to see you two guys, they're used to seeing at the other board meetings, but anyway, welcome. Just a couple of standard questions, I guess. I think it's well needed, and it's timely. Is this going to be standardized? So in other words, when you look at this and develop a watershed, or the, what's the term I'm looking for here? The master plan for this, like, will it be generalized across the area? And then if so, and when it does happen, I want to build a greenhouse range and so forth, do we still have to go through all the loops, or will everything be laid out consistently? In other words, I make an application, it's already been reviewed, and there will be no delays? Is that where this would lead us, I guess? Because currently, we got us, and we gotta go to the IRCA Board, and we gotta go here and there, so I'm looking for a streamlined process?
It certainly will help to streamline things. At this point, a developer would have to hire a consultant and go through a bit of an analysis and prepare a stormwater management plan. That is something that we'll have, we'll still need that, but we'll give them the stormwater runoff rates, rather than having to go through the calculation, so that should save a little bit of time at that point. We also want to look at floodline mapping, so we can establish floor elevation, so that we can have some certainty, and before we start the development, we'll know those two key items, so that should save time. And ideally, we would have a map similar to this that would show people what their runoff rates will be, maybe divided by concessions or divided by farm lots, so that will be established on a plan for them to use during their design.
Okay, so then, if I got this right, in other words, once the elevations are done, like, I guess uniformly across to where we're draining stormwater, and the rate of release from the ponds, then would they have to keep going back to the IRCA organization to receive approval, or will this all be pre-done? And the reason I ask that is I know that in some subdivisions, we've gone through this as well, you know, you approve the subdivision, but then when they go to build a lot, then they have to go back to IRCA again. So I'm just wondering, the timeliness of all this, because I could see, or I don't want to anticipate any delays when these guys start their projects, because what happens is their financing is all in place, and they gotta go, and they gotta have a crop in by January the 1st, or they've lost a year type thing. And I, like, I'm happy to see this come and the streamlining of it, but I just want to be sure that it, it's a quick process.
Thank you, through you, Deputy Worship. Permits and approvals will still be required from the Conservation Authority, but as Alan referred, we will not be having to generate and develop fundamental engineering criteria every time. The scope and scale of this, though, is, and it covers, the three waterways, the three watersheds that are referred to in that study. Should development be pushed or be considered in some other areas, some other tributary drain, unfortunately, in those areas, you're starting at square one because there's been no master planning, no master drainage study put into place. For this area, outletting through the Reed, the Silver, and the Lebo, those watersheds will have all that criteria in place, which will expedite the required approval processes that are still in place. Big Creek, no, Big Creek, I said Lebo, sorry.
Counselor Hammond, you had a question?
Your Worship, thank you. Not a question, a statement. I read through this a number of times, and I think that this is one of the most important, one of the most important issues that have been brought to us, and sometimes since I've been here. I think you realize the impact of this when you read statements in the report that says this practice is no longer appropriate or sustainable. I mean, that's what we're doing now. And I think it's time that, in fact, the time is here now that we need to start moving forward and taking care of this in light of the expansion on greenhouses and those other things that we're getting now, so. Just a comment, thank you.
Thank you. And if there's nothing further, Counselor Verbeke?
Thank you, worthy Deputy Mayor. I just would like to know when this would start with the management's fee of $1,000 per acre, and if it's only on new greenhouses, say, from today, but anything that's on the books last week doesn't count? Rob, Sir Webber?
Mr. Sharon?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think the intention would be that the fee would start as of tomorrow, if council passes the bylaw tonight and adds it to the fee schedule, and the charge will be levied upon pulling the building permit, and so that will be the trigger. If the building permit has been pulled, then that will not be required to be paid, and if it is not, then they will be required to pay.
No, it's okay, it's just know that the buy-in with the water and stuff like that, too, that some people don't even use the water, are upset, but no, we need this, and hopefully now they can build bigger bunk houses on the, on the units to get rid of their waste.
Yes, we have one more question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The $1,000 per acre, if I buy a 30-acre lot, and I'm going to build 10 acres of greenhouses, do I pay on the 30 acres or on the 10 acres?
Through Deputy Mayor, our intention is that you would pay on the 10 acres, so again, based on your building permit, if you are building only 10 acres, then you would pay $10,000 towards this initiative.
Yes, another question.
Yeah, okay, no, it's a little too early. How are they going to base their usage of water then, considering peppers use more water than tomatoes, and depending on the sun, and that's, I mean, it's not going to be the same, similar to residential or commercial or anything? I mean, if, you know, if you're spending a buck on water, a buck and a half, or a buck and a quarter to get rid of it, I mean, this is, they'll never be able to do that.
This is a stormwater, Counselor, not the process effluent, so this is simply management of stormwater.
Okay, there are no other questions? Moved by Counselor Jacobs, seconded by Counselor Hammond, and all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Alan. Appreciate that very much. We are now moving on to the 2018 fee schedule, and for that is Katie McLean.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, members of council. The report before you is for the 2018 fee schedule. The recommendation that's being proposed is that the 2018 fee schedule be approved, and that administration be directed to forward bylaw 7317 to provide for a tariff of fees to be charged in 2018 by the municipality of Leamington. Each year, administration reviews all of the fees, and in doing so, considers market comparisons, cost increases, and the best information that's available at the time. The result is the proposed schedules A through M attached to this report. These show the comparative data for 2017 fees and the proposed 2018 fees. The purpose of these fees is to apply user pay or a fee-for-service approach to services that benefit specific users or groups. The fees are then used to estimate budgets and mitigate dollars required to be raised by taxes. So all of these schedules, with the exception of Schedule A and B, are effective from January 1st through December 31st. The complex and the arena, which are Schedule A and B, however, follow the common ice season and school year, so these are effective July 1st through June 30th. It's important to note that all of the rates shown in these schedules are before taxes, and so when the fees are charged, all applicable taxes will be applied. In order to prepare the 2018 budget for December deliberations, approval of these fees is requested at this time. If, however, circumstances change during the year and fees need amending, further reports will be brought to council for consideration. As far as the financial impact goes, if we were to keep the 2017 fees as they are and not make any increases, the result would be an increase in demand from taxation revenue to cover the increased costs incurred, both internal and external, to deliver these services. So I just want to highlight the changes for 2018, just by schedule. So in Schedule A, some market comparisons were done to similar youth programs, resulting in recommendations for increases. The activity guide is also, it's no longer printed in black and white, so we've made some changes here for color printing, and there's also some, some other options as far as sizes of the ads go, and the prices have been amended to attract more interest. Several updates have been made to reflect current practices, along with other minor adjustments. Schedule B for the arena...
I'm sorry, Katie, just for, just a second, just before we move on to the next schedule, could I suggest that we stop at the end of each schedule to see if council has any questions about that particular schedule? And then we can move on to the next one, okay?
Okay, so we have a question, Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The advertising for pool and racket, are they sold out?
I'll let the directors for the service areas address the specific questions.
By advertising, do you mean the rink boards and these types of advertising, Counselor?
The pool advertising, it says here that it's 500 a year, lanes or whatever, 300, the racquetball?
Sorry, yeah. I don't have that information as to whether or not we're sold out with regards to advertising space.
Reason I ask that, I just wonder if the, the cost was comparable, I mean, are we charging too much for rental or not enough? That's, that's the question that I had. And Katie, you mentioned a comparator. Who are we comparing with? Someone locally or within the immediate radius of our municipality?
Thank you. Yeah, Terry, Terry would call around to many of the similar complexes in, say, the catchment area, the Windsor Essex area, when he was looking at market comparisons.
I think the CAO has an answer for you.
With, with respect to the sale of boards and advertising and sponsorship of certain areas, you will recall that administration came with a report maybe a month ago, where we are looking to get some assistance, some professional assistance, in identifying where those opportunities still lie, and whether we're... still lie and whether we're charging the right amount. So that's, I know it doesn't answer your question in whole, but we're undertaking that review right now.
No further questions? Okay, Katie?
Schedule B for the arena, you'll see here that the, there's various ice rate increases being recommended in order to stay competitive.
Other questions? Counselor Wilkinson?
That was the only one I had started in this report, was, again, the advertising fees for the arena boards are sitting idle since 2005. 12 years they've been sitting on 500 bucks. But if you say that's going to be the job of the new, or not the job, or it's not a job, the person we're getting review, that'd be great. Thank you.
Counselor Verbeke.
I'm just curious if anybody has an idea how much it costs us to make an hour's worth of ice?
Talk about ice cubes?
Mr. Sherrill, you can take a stab at it?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just know this information because of my time previously having that department, and we haven't gone through, I think you can appreciate, you know, the nuance of trying to hive out a particular hour of ice in an operation, but the industry itself has put together a standard for Ontario, and it's basically anywhere between $350 and $400 an hour, I think is the standard. But I'll certainly research what the, sort of, the newest industry numbers are, and we can circulate that to council.
If I may, though, that's very, very competitive, though, isn't it? You've got arenas that are looking for business, and they will slash just to get people in the door, so it's a bit of a lost leader, is it not?
Yeah, I think it's mostly about how much are you willing to subsidize it for, and it's always competitive, and you're right, people do try and, you know, they'll go to the neighboring community to save a couple dollars per hour. So it's almost like the cost to produce it is not necessarily tied to the costs we're able to charge, given the competitiveness, and frankly, the ability of the users to pay those large fees.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think if we're talking about ice, our increase in, or a change in fees is more reflective of the costs of operating. I think it's about three, in some cases, two to $3 an hour or per hour on those. Terry did call around to other facilities to make sure that, even though we were increasing it slightly, that we were still in line, and that was the number that we landed on. But yeah, I mean, given the amount of rental time that we have with our ice, we have to remain competitive. We're not in a position where our ice is completely booked.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Go ahead, Katie.
Schedule C, fire services. There are several new fees being recommended here, including nuisance alarms, fire extinguisher training, risk and safety management plans, and there are also a couple amendments to the inspections.
I imagine Counselor Hammond will have a question here.
I do. I see our chief and deputy sitting in the back, and I think that it's important that they come up and, moving forward, and explain these nuisance alarms and the reasons for these new amounts that are being put out there.
Sorry.
Yeah, Chief, I think that, I mean, I understand the reasons for the nuisance alarm fees, and I think it's important that you explain that to the other councilors as to why the need for this.
Okay. Well, so far this year, we've had 65 alarms, I'm going to get my glasses on, sorry, 91 calls for nuisance alarms or fire alarms this year. We've been to the same place last year 20 times and 15 times this year. The alarms are working, but the people are smoking in their rooms when they're not supposed to, so they're nuisance alarms. Is that?
You're going to expand on that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This, I appreciate the statistics, and this is, this is in part what we've been looking at. When, it's not a false alarm, it's actually an alarm, but it's a nuisance alarm because what's happening is, in some, many circumstances, the alarm is being caused by inappropriate behavior, and if it's within an institution and the management of the institution is not taking steps to stop that behavior, then what simply happens is that our resources are spread out, taken to the place, and not then available if a true emergency occurred. So the incentive or disincentive, as you, whatever way you want to call it, you'll see that the first nuisance alarm really has no fee, but when there's a second one, the $410 third, and I'm going to read through it because I think it's appropriate, that the third nuisance alarm would be $820, the fourth nuisance alarm would be $1,230. Now, if you're not getting the, if you're not getting the message by number four, you're going to get it at number five, when it's $1,640, and the sixth will be $2,050. That's within a 12-month period. And, you know, it does sound steep, but considering the cost of the resources to go where a situation is that the management of the place is not taking reasonable steps to stop these actions, and considering the risk it places on the remainder of the residents, I think that these fees are necessary, because historically, you can hear, nothing has changed under the current circumstances, so now it's time for us to make the changes.
Deputy Worship, if I may add to that, too, the complacency of the firefighters themselves responding to the same place every time, and it's a nuisance alarm at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, it's hard for them to get up and motivated in the middle of the night to go to the same place. And, it worries me, because a lot of these are high-risk places that could have fires, there are people that are, need help, special needs, and our firefighters like its complacency after a while because it's, too often it's happening.
Obviously. Good point. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, we've discussed this previously, though, and you mentioned that there was a hiccup in the bylaw or something? Is that, or maybe, Peter, you could answer that or something, that there's, there was a, there's a, within the bylaw that we're not, there was something that?
Sure, I can maybe speak to that. I think what it was, was it was just the wording of what the bylaw was, and it was more geared towards the alarm system having a malfunction, not somebody activating the alarm system. It's semantics. Basically, the alarm system's working fine, the only problem is we're responding to a call because someone either pulled a pool station or set off a smoke alarm or smoke detector because they were smoking in a room that they weren't supposed to. And our bylaw never really covered that because the alarm system was working properly.
So if I may, will this now rectify this and give us the opportunity to penalize?
That's the intention, and that's why there's a distinction between a false alarm and a nuisance alarm. The nuisance alarm is that, hey, there was an alarm, the alarm was working, but the reason that the alarm went off is because of lack of action on the people who have control. In other words, it could have been mitigated, it could have been stopped ahead of time if the rules were, if the rules were followed and enforced inside of that organization. We can't be asking our fire department to come out simply because management of an organization refuses to uphold the standards of no smoking inside the building, and especially smoking in bed.
Counselor Hammond?
Yeah, just to summarize as well, because, I mean, these fees seem high, but, and what the chief and deputy really haven't touched on, because, and they know, that the one place that I think we're referring to in numbers here, I mean, that's a big building, and it's not uncommon for the firefighters to spend two hours there. And two hours in the wintertime means two hours of cleanup, when you go back to the fire hall and you have to wash up all that equipment and put it back into service again. So, and to Peter's point, there needs to be some form of control on that so we can help prevent these nuisance calls coming forward.
Chief, did you have something to say?
Just remember, Counselor Jacobs, the wording in the bylaw before said three consecutive false alarms, so something had a malfunction three times in a row in order for it in the old bylaw. Okay, so that's, you would never be able to enforce the old bylaw. It'd be very rare.
Well, Chief, we will be looking forward to those monthly reports that you send out. Now, we've got a...
I hope you're enjoying them.
Oh, yes, we are. I think there isn't one person up here that isn't. It's very nice to have that, gives us an idea of exactly what's going on. So nuisance calls will be, oh, yes, and the checks?
The checks?
The money at the end of the year will be nice to see as well.
We have another report coming back for you.
Okay. So that's not, you're not talking budget, are you?
I think it's better than budget.
Okay, oh, all right. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, then. Thank you both, gentlemen.
Thank you, too, for the support at the last few fires and that stuff. We really appreciated all the firefighters did, and your support means a lot to the department. Thank you.
Good, good. You're welcome. Thank you, gentlemen.
More questions?
Is there anything else? No, I think you've got it covered. Thank you both. So Katie, on to the next one, then.
All right, Schedule D is the arena.
Oh, can I interrupt just for a minute? This is the schedule that Counselor Jacobs has a problem with, has a conflict with, I should say, sorry. Conflict.
Okay, so you'll see on this schedule that due to increasing hydro costs, it's being recommended that seasonal dock hydro fees are increased, increases to jet ski dock rentals, and the overnight transient watering rate are also being recommended. And one other thing I just want to note here, the captain's club membership in 2017 was being reported, or presented, I'm sorry, in a US dollar. We've now changed this to Canadian dollars, so the entire schedule is all in Canadian funds.
Questions on this schedule? Counselor Hammond?
Your Worship, thanks again. You know, in reviewing this, and I've been down to the docks a number of times lately, and I'm looking specifically at the seasonal dock for hydro rates. We have a seasonal rate of, you know, of $75 for a boat that's from 19 to 25 foot, when in fact, a lot of boats 19 to 25 foot don't even use hydro, now a lot of them do. And seasonal rate for hydro boats 40 foot and over of $175. Now, I understand that we can't put meters on each one of these pedestals so we can tell exactly how much hydro is being used, but I can tell you that I think that a boat that's 40 footer over, and some of those up to 65 foot, are using the lion's share of that hydro, when you see some of them even having two cords running to them. And I think that this is out of balance, by my view. And I'd like us to take another look at it. Thank you.
Is that direction to admin? Please.
These are the fees that are being provided for tonight for approval for next year. So the clarification I'm looking for is, are you asking us for 2019 fees that we go back and have a closer look at these, or are you suggesting that these new fees that we are suggesting for 2018 not be reviewed? Because it has a, it affects what we're doing here tonight, obviously.
Okay, yes, all right, yes, I understand. And I would like to see them corrected for this year, because I think they're way out of whack by my, and I'm certainly not an electrician, and I don't have any background in that, but I just know if you walk up and down and see two air conditioners running on some of these large boats that run steady, they're certainly, as I said, using a lot more than their share of $175 a year in hydro.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We can look at it, but I guess, per boat, where not every boat is metered, this is kind of shared, not evenly, but there are obviously different prices for different sizes of vessels in the sense that, so smaller vessels is a smaller charge, but to exactly say what the rate would be, the consumption would be on a larger vessel versus a smaller one, and then to, without them being metered to share that equitably, I don't, I don't know what type of formula we would use.
And it also causes a, I think we want to be specific here. If there is a particular seasonal dock hydro fee that is problematic, then I would suggest that we identify that one, because otherwise, if we don't approve this fee schedule, then we can't move forward with any of these changes. And if there is only one that we're really wanting to have a closer scrutiny, well, essentially, what we're saying then is that this fee will remain the same for 2018, because we will approve this, and we'll have to have a closer look. It still comes back to 2019. So I guess I'm asking counsel, or Counselor Hammond in particular, if there's one, let's identify it, it will remain the same for 2017 because the fee won't change, and then we'll be coming back to 2019, or is council as a whole agreeable to the suggested change with the commitment of administration to looking at it more closely for 2019?
Counselor Hammond?
Yes, I can understand the importance of what Peter has said, and I certainly don't want to hold up the progress here tonight, but I do think we really need to take a serious look at this again for the following year then.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Madam Chair. This $25 on the, we're talking five different boat classifications, what would that amount to in a season, roughly? I know you don't have those kind of figures. Any of the hydro rates, was that a count, or a number of boats? I'm sorry, I didn't give this to you. Previously, it just came to me. Otherwise, I would have given it previously so you could find the information. I know, probably don't have that on me.
We can commit to getting that information to you at a later date if that isn't necessarily needed for us to pass a bylaw tonight.
So then, are you taking direction at looking further into this at the, you know, the larger boats, the 40-foot plus, perhaps to investigate it in the coming year? Because we, you know, the new council may not consist of the same people, that's all I'm saying. Perhaps that can be looked into in the coming year, in the new season, and maybe slightly undercover investigation.
Well, I understand. We want to be fair, administration wants to be fair as well. So I think that, given the concerns that were raised here tonight, I would suggest that we move forward with this schedule as it's presented, with the commitment to administration looking at this issue as a whole and preparing for next year.
And that's all right? Okay. Go ahead, Katie, next schedule?
Okay, the next schedule is Schedule E, planning and building fees. Increases are being recommended to reflect actual costs incurred and services provided for site plan agreements and site plan amendments. It is also recommended that the Committee of Adjustment' special meeting fee be increased. And then there's also one fee that is being moved to Schedule M.
Go ahead, then.
Okay, Schedule F is finance and business services. There are several new fees being recommended here. These include online tax certificates, ownership changes, mortgage listings, payment receipts, and for adding Provincial Offenses Act fines to tax rolls. Several fees have been removed from the schedule as a result of our new financial system and current practices. And I'm also going to note here that the photocopies are being moved to Schedule M as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, go ahead.
Schedule H, which is public works, the only changes here are regarding garbage collection and is an increase as per the contract.
I see no questions. I see no questions. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Schedule I, pollution control center. Sewer surcharges are recommended to increase as per the approved rate study.
I don't see any questions. Or hands up?
There are no recommended changes for Schedule J, which is transit fees. Schedule K is water services. As a result of increased material costs, service connections and inside setups are recommended for increases. All other consumption rate changes are per the approved rate study.
Nothing again?
Schedule L, engineering services. Increases to subdivision engineering review fees and drainage tile loan inspection service fees are being recommended, as well as changes to the mapping fees.
Again, we're satisfied.
Okay. And finally, Schedule M, which is legal and legislative services. New fees are being recommended that relate to the taxi cab plates and decision appeals, noise bylaw, application for exemption, and routine disclosure. Other various adjustments are being recommended based on time and resources needed. And like I mentioned, there's a couple fees that have been moved to this schedule.
Nothing again.
Okay. So the recommendation again is that the proposed 2018 fee schedule be approved, and that administration be directed to forward by law 7317 to provide for a tariff of fees to be charged in 2018 by the municipality of Leamington.
Gentlemen?
Just before you do that?
Before we do that?
With your indulgence, I would suggest that you, somebody move D first. While Counselor Jacobs is not here, then the vote can be on D, and then the second vote can be on the remaining.
Okay. Moved, so you're moving Section D on the Marina fees, seconded by Counselor Dunn? All in favor? And that's carried. So then we'll move on to the rest of the fees, all of them minus Schedule, 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 sorry, Schedule D. Moved by Counselor Verbeke and seconded by Counselor Wilkinson. Comments or questions? All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Katie. So now we move on to the Erie South, Stewart, Conover, and Forest Road reconstruction and sewer separation. Alan, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. The purpose of the report before you now is to request the Council approve $445,000 toward utility upgrades on Erie Street South for the reconstruction or as a pre-work for the reconstruction of Erie Street South, Stewart, Conover, and Forest Road reconstruction, and that the work be funded through the federal gas tax. Sewer separation for the area of Erie Street South between Seacliff and Robinson, Conover between Erie Street South and Forest, Stewart from Conover to the North End, and Forest from Seacliff to Park Street is the next step in our sewer separation program. The limits of the project are shown in Figure 1 of the report. In 2016, the municipality was notified that the project was approved for 50% funding up to $2 million through the Small Communities Fund Program. The project is planned to move forward as, with a cost share from benefiting properties for the sanitary sewer component of the works only. A public information center was held on July 26, 2017, to notify residents and property owners of the work, and the municipality's intent to assess a share of the cost of the works to benefiting properties. Thirty parties attended the information center and provided similar comments. Residents generally support the need for sewer separation and new curbing and upgrades, but feel the property owner's share of the work is too high. And further to this project, Leamington, through the active transportation plan, identified Erie Street between Highway 77 and the waterfront as a primary north-south connection. This section of road connects the downtown area to many key destinations located within the municipality, such as commercial areas, municipal buildings, the waterfront, parks, trails, the Marina, et cetera. As a result of the active transportation plan, the pavement width of Erie Street South between Seacliff Drive and Robson Road would be increased to allow for two lanes of vehicular travel and two bicycle lanes. And to aid in some traffic calming, we're proposing center islands at strategic locations near intersections along the project. Some of them are identified in Attachment Number 1 to the report. You can see a small island proposed at Conover in Erie Street South. And we're looking at a small island near Rickway in Erie Street South. This project also supports the desire to redevelop and improve Leamington's waterfront. There's opportunity here to bury utilities in the Erie Street South right-of-way. While only the design works were planned for 2017, there's now an opportunity to bury the utility infrastructure this year. And that would remove that preliminary work from the 2018 construction schedule and speed things along. In order to complete this work, Council would need to approve funding for the burying of utilities in 2017 rather than waiting for 2018. And again, that amount is just under $450,000. And that's again, because it's included, it will be proposed in the 2018 budget, and was not included in the 2017 budget to go to construction. When the municipality, in the financial impact section, you'll see that when the municipality submitted for the SCF grant, the project in the fall of 2015, the estimated total cost of the works at that time were $4 million. At the time of preparing the 2017 budget, the cost was estimated at 4.7 million. Currently, our estimate to complete the works is now 5.7 million. And you'll see that broken down in Table 1, where we have engineering design at approximately a quarter million. The actual construction costs we're estimating at 4.6 million. Contract admin and inspection services during construction would be 400,000. And the paragraph underneath that table, we were trying to explain that we did get approval for SCF grant, which is a federal funding program. And in that contract, it allows for the municipality to fund these projects up to one-third of the total eligible cost with federal money. So that by way of our calculations, we can conclude that we can use a second funding program, the federal gas tax program, to fund these utility relocations. So again, we are recommending that Council approve the cost of the, or the budget for this work, and we get started in 2017.
Okay, Alan, I'm going to start with Counselor Dunn.
Through you Deputy Mayor. Alan, my first question is regarding, actually, I'll start off with the Forest. This is actually only the drawings for Erie Street. The Forest and Conover, will that be coming back to us? Obviously with the plans for that before, like redesign of, the design of what, where things are going with that?
Typically, we would bring back a report to Council, at least in a case like this. We've had the public meeting, we've had, we've had comments back from the public, we're incorporating some of those changes. We would bring a report back to you when we're ready to award a contract. And we would show you, if anything major changed, that's when we would present that to Council.
With some of the thoughts on Forest, and what your designs are, and I know that's jumping back forth a couple different ideas with the parking and stuff, as we've discussed, that, so it's only going to come back after, when you have the tender process in place? Is that what you're saying?
Sorry. At this point, yes. We didn't get any, anything out of the ordinary from the residents with respect to things like sidewalk and the traffic calming on Erie Street. The big question was, what do we do with Forest? Whether it become one-way or two-way? It's likely that it will remain as a two-way with the reverse angle parking. We don't see anything drastic changing.
It's because of that that I was wondering whether or not it would come back, and I've been asking that beforehand because of case of any interest, because there's also talk of the three feet off the one side, and they're very tight spaces on those properties. That's why I was considering, because we don't want to get, depending on, you know, public input on that at the time, they may, you may have a huge change on that. My actual other question is regarding the islands, and the reason for the islands on Erie Street, and also with, as you go down there, there's a lot of lines as well. So showing off which is the actual mediums you're planning on for Erie Street?
Sure. And again, I realize that the drawings don't really do it justice. We do have some drawings. If Council would like to look at them, we can show you some of the other drawings that we've prepared for the project. But the traffic islands are a method of traffic calming. So trying to slow traffic down, causing traffic to, you know, come to a narrower road, or do a little bit of a jog tends to slow people down. So that's the purpose of the islands here on Erie Street South.
And you said, there's only a couple of them, you're talking, that's going to actually be there. It's not going to be like it's running all the way down?
That's correct. It's not the entire length. Typically, you'll see two lanes of pavement and two bike lanes. And then when we come to intersections or strategic points, we'd do something to change, to change what you see, and just slow you down a little bit.
Thank you. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. My question, I guess to you Alan, would be timing, simply because of Erie South, the heavy influx of traffic that that uses. We have the ferry that comes in and everything else. Like, is this going to be during the peak summer months, or can we schedule this so the least of impact? Because if we, if you got it shut down, I guess the only options are going to be Forest to park, or up Cherry Lane and so forth. It's going to create a huge issue. The other thing I'm asking as well, is that you're saying the reduction in the size of Erie Street. With the ferries coming in, and then the new ferries we're getting, and the amount of heavy transports that would be coming off of Peely Island and stuff that goes that way, are we going to be able to accommodate them effectively with this type of construction?
Certainly. You were referring to the width of the lanes. So they'll be sufficient for transport trucks to get in and out of, out of the ferry dock. That won't be an issue. The road will feel wider because it will have bike lanes on both sides. But the lanes itself, the lanes themselves will be constructed so that we can get transports through Erie Street South without any issues. And maybe you could repeat your first question.
Timing of the project because of the activity in that area.
Sure. Sorry, I don't have a lot of information on the project as a whole. The purpose of this report was to get a head start on some of the utility relocations. We're still working through the design, the final design, and getting things tweaked. We would like to get the project ready for tender late this year or early next year for the road reconstruction part, so that we would be the first out of the gate. And then we could get started possibly as soon as the weather breaks. We do consider, you know, our events, the municipal events, and traffic and things like that. So we'll have to fit that into our traffic control plan and the timing of the project.
Yes, thank you. So you do have the capabilities then on somewhat recommending when start and finish dates and so forth for this type of a project. And especially now, if we're getting our budget done prior to the new year, that gives you an opportunity to deal with, I guess, more construction companies and get the better deal.
Yes, we do, but I have to caution, it's not going to be perfect for everyone. We'll do our best to fit these things in.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you. Two questions there Alan. Earlier this year, from spring, probably till right up to Hogsford Hospice, I seen Akon was working there quite a bit earlier this year. Looked like they were doing underground services, and I thought that's what they would have been doing, was preparing for the construction that's going to happen there. What was that, what was the purpose of that? And my second question is, how many trees are we going to lose as a result of this project? You know, I think about Erie Street, when we did oak to Marlborough, we really changed the landscape there, the look, with the amount of trees that we lost. Is this going to be a similar thing? Because that's pretty shaded, stretched down that way.
Yes, the gas work was in relation to this project, not necessarily for what I'm asking for. The particular utilities we're talking about tonight, that I was looking for burying, are communications and electrical. Union Gases did do some relocations along Erie Street in anticipation of our project already. With tree, as far as trees go, I would like to get back to you on that. I don't have the final numbers on the trees, if you don't mind. I don't, I just don't have that information.
One more thing?
And one more thing I should add. I would have, you mentioned that you have some drawings, better drawings showing the islands and the roads, the concept, I guess. I've never seen those. I'd like to see that as well.
Mr. Newfeld?
With respect to the trees, administration is very sensitive about losing trees and losing big trees. But unfortunately, when, when we get into narrow areas like this, no doubt about it, we are going to lose some big trees during this project. I've even been asked, well, how many of the trees can we move? We'll move as many as is reasonable and can be replanted. But our philosophy is that when we lose trees, we replant trees after the construction is finished. Especially for this area, if you can, if you can envision what it's like to be on Erie Street heading south and getting to Seacliff, this now becomes our gateway to the waterfront. And while it's difficult losing big trees, it also opens up opportunities that now the view changes significantly. And our waterfront, where we're putting an awful lot of time and effort into drawing people to that as a destination, that will be augmented by the fact that it will be more open once the construction is done. So we are going to lose some big trees. We're not going to say we aren't. But we will be replanting trees as appropriate.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Madam Chair. Alan, back to, somebody said about the diagrams to see in detail. With this, the yellow on everything, that's why I was asking about the medium, because where the road markings are and the medium itself, all are highlighted in yellow. So it just looked like one continuous to me. Somebody, with your expertise, you've seen it many a times over. So it's like, no big deal. You can under, you can differentiate from, sorry about that. Little tongue tied, or lips got caught up or something. But differentiate from the actual medium, from the actual road drawings. But I would like to go back to Forest. And the reason why I keep wanting, wanted to come back before it goes into the tender amount, because when it comes to the Forest, the traffic study, I know there was one done. But as the residents pointed out, it was only like the last couple weeks in August, when we've had an exceptional year where the traffic was flowing incredibly down there. I mean, it was packed. And if you, I got a chance to be down there, I have friends that live down there, and you can actually sit on it, and I know people that live on that street, close to that entrance, in and out of the park. The, it doesn't actually represent, and would you actually get a true representation of what your traffic study is saying? Because it is, the last couple weeks hasn't been as busy as like around the Hogsford Hospice, or any of those other busy weekends. It's packed all day long. And the other concern was like the entranceway, in and out of the parking lot. To see, and as I talked to Alex about it, he said that you're looking at tightening up. There's a couple different options you guys weighing, and I get that. And that's why I was asking about it coming back, because you're looking at tightening that entranceway up. But as I watch customers or drivers coming in and out of that entranceway, they literally get stopped up the way it is. They're half out into the street and don't know where other people are going, and it's just a mishmash, including police officers honking at people to keep the flow going. So that is why, these are a few different issues that I'm concerned about, and that's why I was concerned whether or not we why I was concerned whether or not we bring it back, or so we can have a final discussion on it.
Was there a question in there? Was there a question in there? Okay. Sorry, I just didn't get the question, that's all. If I may, Alan, you talk about the property owners thinking the share of the work is too high. What kind of figures were they complaining about? Like, what was the amount? We know it doesn't matter where they live, whether if they live on Forest or they live on Armstrong Drive, it's always considered too high. But I was just like, a ballpark of where you were guesstimating when you gave these figures to the residents. Did you have a price per property?
We did, and a schedule was included in their invitation to the meeting, and it was based on their frontage and our price per meter for sanitary sewer that's in our fee bylaw, and the price per connection. So that's where the numbers came from. So those numbers will change. If we build this in 2018, we'll use the 2018 numbers.
So they'll be higher than what they got?
It's likely. I can't remember the number I put in the 2018, I don't think I changed the number in the 2018 fee schedule.
All righty, okay, thank you. So if there are no more questions, council? Moved by councillor Jacobs, seconded by councillor, councillor Dunn. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. We are now moving on to the 2017 pedestrian crossover and the active transportation facilities contract, and I'm assuming that's you again. Okay, great, thanks, Alan.
Thank you again, Deputy Mayor. The purpose of this report is to award construction of some pedestrian crossovers and some active transportation facilities, bike lanes in particular, to Ron Field and Sun Electric. My apologies to council, I don't feel like I've properly done justice to this project to describe what we're doing, so I'll try my best through this to tell you what we're doing here in particular. Prior to 2016, and again, in the absence of common provincial standards, a variety of configurations of signs and pavement markings for uncontrolled pedestrian crossings have been installed in many municipalities across Ontario and including Leamington. And the municipality, again, installed courtesy crossings at a number of locations, as shown in figure one of the report. In 2016, the province of Ontario provided critical updates to the Ontario Traffic Manual and the methodology and decision-making processes that now exist to assess and grade these crossings, and they provide more options for design professionals. So that's good news. In honor about that same time, Leamington council approved our active transportation plan. Many of the locations for on-road bicycle facilities are adjacent to the locations of our pedestrian crossings. Accordingly, the design of the pedestrian crossings took into account the recommended active transportation plan facilities at or in the vicinity of the, what we call the PXO locations. As an example, the PXO that's shown in figure one is on Robson Road. That will now have an updated signage and crossing facility along with bike lanes along Robson Road, and that's shown in attached figure three. You'll see a 14 dot at the bottom of figure three, and then a green line depicting the bike lanes. So we tried to do two things at once if we were in that location. The municipality of Leamington contracted an engineering assignment with R.C. Spencer Associates. Part one, or phase one of the assignment was to prepare the necessary documents in order to convert all of our existing courtesy crossings to confirm with the new standards established by the province through the Ontario Traffic Manual, and construct, again, the associated active transportation facilities or bike lanes. The recommended PXO configurations will include pavement markings, signage, street lighting and infrastructure, or street lighting infrastructure at all locations. Amber flashing lights will also be included at some locations, and an example of this is shown in figure 26. That's right out of the Ontario Traffic Manual. You'll see these PXO crossings require a certain lighting level, so we'll have to add lighting at almost all of the locations. The crossings will look similar to this, but not necessarily exactly like this, depending on the road width, the number of lanes, the vehicle traffic, pedestrian traffic. We'll have varying levels of these. Some crossings will just have the white ladder crossing and a sign. Some will have a sign with flashing lights on it. Some will have flashing lights and an arm with another sign and more flashing lights, just depending on what it called for through the analysis. But I wanted to include this example of what you might see. So we'll be taking down the yellow signs, like the courtesy crossing signs, and we'll be putting up these signs, which are what we call regulatory signs, and have status under the Highway Traffic Act. The courtesy crossings do not. Of particular importance in this contract is the establishment of bike lanes along Erie Street South between Oak Street and Melrose. The existing four travel lanes will be replaced with two travel lanes and a center two-way left turn lane and bike lanes on either side of the road, and that's shown on figure three. You'll see the green line along Erie Street from about Oak South to, almost to Palford, but it really stops around Melrose. I do need to, I guess, beg your forgiveness, I added some, I added something onto this, into this report that I really didn't intend to. If you look at figure three, again, you'll see that we included for a change at the intersection of Cherry Lane and Seacliff Drive. That's number 13 on the map. Wasn't my intention to include that at this time, but to bring it in a future report back to council with phase two of the study that we've already got Spencer working on. It does require some additional discussion between the administration and the consultant before I'm really comfortable bringing that back to council, so that will get, that shouldn't have appeared in the report. We're not planning, or we're not going to move forward with any work at that intersection yet, but we'll bring something back for council's consideration. With that, I would request that we delete schedule I that's included in the report. That schedule I had to do with that intersection and should be removed from this report, and that will come back later. So tender documents were prepared and made available on our bids and tenders webpage. Ron Field and Sun Electric was the only tenderer through this public process. Their tender price was $558,540 plus tax. We did review and find a small error in their tender and found that it should have been $559,540 plus tax. I did note on page five of my report, or page 125 of the agenda, that all of these changes do require changes to our traffic and sign bylaws. So I listed in that paragraph there under proposed bylaw changes that traffic bylaw 428495 be changed, and I would, I included schedules B, 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 C, D, DD, H, and I'd like to delete I, that's the schedule I just referred to, and changes to schedule K. The subject project is funded from several budgets. We have courtesy crossing updates that were included in our 2017 budget for $290,000. We had a line item for AT study implementation in pedestrian crossing facilities at $230,000, and some urban lighting upgrades at $30,000, and that totals $550,000. You'll see that when you add things up, that we have a variance of approximately $19,388 that we'd like to, if needed, we do have a $30,000 contingency in the contract, but if needed, we'd like to fund that from the Federal Gas Tax Reserve Fund. So we are recommending that this project be awarded to Ron Field and Sun Electric.
Thank you, Alan. We'll start with a question from councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Alan, the one spot that I highlighted here that I thought was a very bold move is going from Oak to Melrose, taking our traditional four lanes out there and putting in the bike lanes, which I like, and I'm just wondering, do we have data behind us, though, that says, you know, restricting? That's a lot of traffic that comes from Melrose south down to Seacliff Drive. You know what a cluster it is, every Saturday, Sunday over there. Eventually, it has to travel, travel north. What data do we have to make sure that we aren't, you know, going to cause mass hysteria when they come into two lanes of traffic there?
I can't say that we have data that would prevent us from having mass hysteria, but it's just something that we've talked about moving forward with and having a road diet, reducing our travel lanes, slowing cars down, thinking of our thoroughfares as thoroughfares for pedestrians, cyclists, cars. We have other routes around town. We put in the East Arterial Road. We're working on getting our trucks out of the downtown core. We're thinking about how we can do that, and if it's appropriate. We have Shirk Street that's an option for people. We can have certainly a lot more traffic on Shirk Street, it has plenty of capacity. But we don't have, we didn't do an analysis to see how things would work there, primarily because of the things I mentioned and the fact that it's a long stretch of road with very few driveways and few side streets.
I'm just a little surprised by that, because we usually do have a traffic study, you know, data behind us to justify a major road change, and I consider this a major road change there. And I like it, I do, I think it's a bold move. I just hope it pays off. That's my only concern here.
Mr. Newfelt.
Part of the strategic planning process that we dealt with uptown revitalization and some other things, and one of the things that council had indicated to administration at the time, and I think if I remember correctly, it was councillor Verbeke wondering whether we could get the black paint out right away and start covering up those white lines. While we don't have the data, what we do know is that you can move an incredible amount of traffic when you have turning lanes available. So if you consider those four lanes, and when it's time for somebody to turn left, that lane backs up. When you have the turning lane, the traffic continues. And as Alan has already pointed out, Shirk Street was actually designed to allow for traffic to move from Seacliff and to Oak and Oak to Seacliff. That's the reason that it was built the way that it was. And we have the East Arterial Road now. What we're hoping that we're also going to be completing is the connection between Walmart and Canadian Tire, which will alleviate a bunch of traffic that has to leave and go out to Erie and come back in. And further, we're looking at potentially having an entrance to the Walmart parking lot coming directly from Seacliff. We're looking, to take it in just one small piece, doesn't allow for the overall idea of what we're trying to accomplish. And what we're trying to accomplish is making biking facilities available, because one of the issues that, one of the major issues that we have complaints about are bicycles on the sidewalks. Well, we're not going to be able to address that if we don't build bicycle facilities into and onto our roads. So while I'm not a traffic engineer, I do believe that traffic is an awful lot like water. It will find the path of least resistance, and if traffic is slowing down on Seacliff, sorry, on Erie, a movement of that traffic to the East Arterial Road and to Shirk will alleviate some of those problems. If people are using Erie Street as the connecting point between Seacliff and Oak, then it's being used for the wrong purpose, because that's what the other roads were built for. This is for bringing potential customers to the malls, to the stores, and to the services that are available there. So normally, we take the direction that, you know, we get a master plan and look at all of these things before we make any changes, but we heard council loud and clear that we can't wait for these kinds of changes. So what we are hoping to implement, and what we're working towards, is we are saying to the traffic engineers, rather than create a plan for us, what we're doing is we're saying, this is what we want to accomplish, this is what we're going to do. Now tell us how to mitigate the negative impacts of it. In other words, we're going to move forward with transforming that Erie South Road, we're going to use our traffic engineers to minimize the negative effects, but we are going to move forward, and I think that's, I believe that's what council was hoping for, too.
Okay. Councillor Verbeke?
I'm worthy, Deputy Mayor, thanks. I guess just concern with the 560,000, how many of these POX locations are we going to fulfill here now? All 13 of them? Because you got 15 and 16 on the bottom right, I didn't hear that, but 15, 16 on the bottom right of figure three, but you say you're going to eliminate 13, because hopefully that will be a traffic light. But all the other numbers are going to be completed with this 159, or 559,000?
Yes, all 17 that you see here, less that, less numbers 13, and plus all the pavement marking.
When I had to put my squint so I could see a little bit better here, the courtesy crossing on, across the old high school will not be getting one, right?
That's correct. We're working on getting that removed shortly.
Thank you.
Councillor Jacobs.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Going back to this four-lane, two-lane, bike lane, all the businesses are located between those two locations, and I don't care what you say, people are not going to go down Shirk Street, they're not going to go down the Arterial Side Road, they're either going to come up Erie Street, north or south, one way or the other. And you say you want to direct traffic. How about directing bike lanes? Why do they have to be down Erie Street? Why not, bike paths could not be set up for, which they are on Shirk currently, or in other directions? Because, I got to go along with councillor Wilkinson on this one, we're saying, that's a busy area. You've got like four malls down there, you've got a beer store, you've got the liquor stores, you've got like all our Walmart, now we've got Winters, and don't forget Tim Hortons, you know, but, I mean, I can't see the rationale. And I'm not an engineer, and I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not pretending to be, but I mean, just looking at it from a layperson, it doesn't make much sense to me. You know, either widen the road to accommodate bikes, or why can't we designate bike lanes instead of cars? And I know, as Peter's saying, people have to go around. If you're coming off of Seacliff, it'll take a different road to get uptown. Well, if everyone's like me, the straightest point is from A to B. You know, if I'm starting out at, you know, at the foot of the dock and I'm going uptown, I'm going to go right up Erie Street, so. I mean, that's just my thoughts on this, but I, you know, I have a hard time visualizing the concept that rather than trying to move this traffic, we're bottlenecking this traffic. Thank you.
Mr. Newfelt.
I think with respect to the bike lanes, you have to remember that bicycles are allowed on the streets under the Highway Traffic Act, so we wouldn't be able to prohibit them from riding on Erie Street if it remains four lanes. But they're not going to, they're going to be up on the sidewalks, and we're right back to where we started, trying to address one of these bigger problems. I think that change is always difficult, and that's why we're looking to our traffic engineers to help us mitigate the negative effects. But I think what I was, I was trying to get at is if, I understand the stores are there, but if people are using Erie Street for the sole purpose of traveling north and south, then...
then it is more than likely they're going to find, even though that's the straightest line, they're likely to find a less clogged line, which would be Shirk or using the East Arterial Road. We can't do both. We've talked about, we've talked about our strategic plan. We've talked about trying to get traffic, people into our uptown core. We've talked about eliminating bicycles off of the sidewalks. This is the direction that is likely going to work the best. It's not going to be perfect, and I'm sure the transition time will be difficult for some people. But we still have to remember, as I said, you can move an awful lot of traffic with two lanes, lanes going in opposite directions, provided they're not impeded by people who are stopping and trying to turn. And that's where the turning lanes come in. This is the direction we've, we've understood that council wants to go. It's not going to, it's not going to be easy, but it will be better in time, especially as we look at the connections between Walmart and Canadian Tire.
Well, we've had a discussion. There's a recommendation on the, moved by councillor Jacobs, seconded by councillor Verbeke, all in favor. And that's carried. Thank you, Alan. We've already done the Bank Theatre, so we will be moving on to the Modernizing of Ontario's Municipal Legislation Act. And I believe that's Ed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, members of council. This is a report, it's more an overview report than anything else. The legislation received royal assent on June 1st, 2017. It's as a result of a requirement under the municipal act to review every five years. There were three main areas that the legislature reviewed: accountability and transparency, municipal financial sustainability, and responsive and flexible municipal government. The first area that I'd like to deal with is integrity commissioners. As you're aware, the municipality has had one since December 7th, 2015, which puts it ahead of many other municipalities. The role of the integrity commissioner has been expanded by the legislation, and administration will review this expansion of the integrity commissioner's role and report back to council in due course. There, with respect to codes of conduct, again, municipalities had one since June 9th, 2008. What the Bill 68 has done is expanded the reach of codes of conduct to local boards. So what administration will have to do going forward is review the code of conduct, see if it requires any changes, as well as looking at the codes of conduct in relation to municipalities' local boards, and see how that will fit. And we'll report back to you in due course on that. Bill 68 requires that municipality pass a council staff relations policy. There is, that is addressed in the current code of conduct, and will review the current code of conduct in order to ensure that it's in compliance with the provisions of Bill 68. Bill 68 brought some clarity to the definition of meeting. There had been some inconsistency between how the Office of the Ontario Arbiter and other closed-meeting investigators defined meeting. Hopefully, that with the new definition, which focuses on a couple of concepts, quorum, together with whether the discussion that occurred materially advances the business or decision-making of the municipality, will bring greater clarity to the definition of meeting. They've expanded the number of categories in which a closed session can occur, probably in recognition of the fact that municipalities have a number of functions that require some level of confidentiality. With respect to closed-meeting reports, there is now a requirement that if there is a closed-meeting report, that, that be addressed, the report. So administration will look at the procedural bylaw and see how best that, that process can be dealt with. There is a provision with respect to e-meetings that will have to be addressed in a report for council's consideration, dealing with the procedural bylaw. It should be noted that e-meetings will not, participants who are involved through electronic means will not be counted towards either the quorum or be permitted to vote, and won't be able to participate at all in closed meetings. There's a provision with respect to temporary replacements on upper-tier council that will have to be addressed in the procedural bylaw. There, with respect to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, the primary change is that there has to be a disclosure statement in writing, and that that, those disclosure statements will be kept in a registry for public view. There's a recognition in the, that the act, in terms of absences, has to deal with absences due to pregnancy, or birth, or adoption. And that will have to be reported back to council for consideration. There are changes to the contribution limits under the Elections Act, and candidates will be advised of those changes at the time. So in conclusion, Bill 68 is designed to bring greater clarity to some provisions of the municipal act and related legislation. And some of the provisions are in place to broaden municipal authority.
Thank you, Ed. Are there any questions? Moved by councillor Dunn, seconded by councillor Wilkinson, all in favor. That's carried. Thank you, Ed. And now we're on to the video surveillance policy.
Me again.
Is that Ed as well? Okay, all right. Wow. Go ahead.
Going out with a bang. So there's a requirement that we have, or that we should have a video surveillance policy, because we utilize video surveillance in a number of venues on municipal property for the purpose of ensuring safety and security of staff, customers, public and municipal property. We do so to create a safe environment, deter criminal activity or vandalism, and also provide a necessary tool for law enforcement. We also have to balance those goals with minimizing privacy intrusion, ensuring compliance with key requirements of the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. So there are six fundamental parts of a surveillance, video surveillance policy that are going to be interwoven into it. One is it, it will only occur where it's necessary. The public should be aware of it. The manager of information technology is the authorized person to operate the system. There must be a defined purpose for the collection of information. There's a need to set out retention periods and storage methods for the records. And there also has to be an established access provision so that only legitimate access is facilitated. So, that's the report.
Thanks, Ed. Moved by councillor Hammond, seconded by councillor Dunn. Comments? All in favor? And that's carried.
Last ones.
Well, Ed, wow. We'll have to mark this on the calendar. I don't think we've heard you do this ever this much in council meetings since you've, since you've come on board. But this is very nice. Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So there's a request, again, by the Salvation Army to conduct a boot drive in conjunction with the municipal fire service. There's a requirement under the Safe Streets Act that there actually be a bylaw providing an exemption to a charitable organization to permit this kind of solicitation. And it recognizes that the municipality has an interest in either prohibiting such activity, or in this case, regulating it, to deal with issues such as safety, nuisance, and liability. The, so having looked at those three fundamental issues, the conditions A through F in the recommendation are designed to deal with all of those. And so it is the recommendation of administration that a bylaw be passed with those six conditions in order to comply with both the Section 3 of the Safe Streets Act, permit this activity, and regulate it properly.
Thank you, Ed. Moved by councillor Jacobs, seconded by councillor Wilkinson. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, Ed. So now on to matters for approval. The minutes of the Leamington Accessibility Advisory Committee held on June 7th, 2017. Moved by councillor Dunn, seconded by councillor Wilkinson. Questions? All in favor? And that's carried. And then there are other matters for consideration. Are we going to discuss this this evening? Because it was a request of Mayor Patterson. So this is Bill 94, the Proposed Amendment to the Highway Traffic Act and Pilot Project School Bus Camera Systems. And I believe that correspondence came from the town of Tecumseh regarding Bill 94 for proposed amendments to the Highway Traffic Act and the pilot project. So the resolution for consideration is that the municipality of Leamington support Bill 94, an act to amend the Highway Traffic Act with respect to evidence obtained from school bus camera systems, and that the province be encouraged to mandate school bus cameras on all school buses, and that the costs are borne by the province and not municipalities. And further, that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Premier of Ontario, the Minister of Transportation, area MPPs, leader of the opposition party, leader of the third party, AMO, County of Essex, area municipalities, and Chatham Kent. Did anyone have a question or a comment? Supported by councillor Verbeke, seconded by councillor Jacobs. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. There's no, nothing to report on closed session? Oh, yes, there is. No, that's right. We're waiting, aren't we? Correct. Sorry. Consider, consideration of bylaws, and I'll leave that to you, Mr. CAO.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Consideration of bylaws. Bylaw 5317, being a bylaw to provide for a maintenance schedule of the assessment for the Sloan Drain in the municipality of Leamington and the County of Essex. This is the third and final reading.
Motion by councillor Jacobs, seconded by councillor, no, motion by councillor Hammond, sorry. It's getting late. Seconded by councillor Dunn. All in favor? And that's carried. Maybe you could change your first name, might be better.
All right. So we have a number of other bylaws that I will read out for consideration. Bylaw 66-17, being a bylaw to appoint commissioners and establish annual fees for the better maintenance of various municipal drainage schemes throughout the municipality of Leamington, DR 1017. As well, bylaw 67-17, being a bylaw to amend the comprehensive zoning bylaw, number 890-09, for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to the subject land ZBA number 156, One Pickwick Drive, PLA 34-17 as amended. Bylaw 68-17, being a bylaw to amend the comprehensive zoning bylaw, number 89, sorry, 890-09, for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to the subject land ZBA number 160, 1049 Mercia Road 12, PLA 35-17. Bylaw 69-17, being a bylaw to amend the comprehensive zoning bylaw, number 890-09, for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to the subject lands ZBA number 161, 705 Mercia Road 5, PLA 33-17. Bylaw 71-17, being a bylaw to amend bylaw number 4284-95 as amended, being a bylaw for the regulation of traffic and parking in certain areas of the municipality of Leamington, schedules B, C, D, H, K as amended, BB and DD, Engineering 20-17. Bylaw 72-17, being a bylaw to permit the Salvation Army, in association with the Leamington Firefighters Association, to hold a boot drive fundraising event on October 28th, 2017, report LLS 46-17. Bylaw 7317, being a bylaw to provide for a tariff of fees to be charged in 2018 by the municipality of Leamington, Finance 15-17. And bylaw 7417, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held September 25th, 2017.
Did everyone get that, or would you need it repeated? Moved by councillor Verbeke, seconded by councillor Wilkinson. All in favor? And that's carried. So notices of motion, there are none. So we're under open session. Is there anyone that needs, wants to speak? Councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm wondering if it's possible that we commission the province of, trying to get an advanced green turn signal on the Alteria Road here in the corner of 77 Highway. Because what happens is, people come up to the, up to the intersection, and because there's no advanced turn signals going left, they'll hurry up and cut in front of other vehicles, and sooner or later, there's going to be more accidents out there. And I don't know how the other members of council feel, but I don't travel to the great deal. But when you do, I mean, you're held up on that line for quite a bit trying to get, and I don't know why, it was never put into an advanced turn signal. The other portion of my, my thought is, and especially in light of the fact that we're talking about putting more traffic potentially down the Alteria Road, is that we can also commission to see if we can't get the speed limit increased on the Alteria Road from Talbot Street East to Seacliff Drive, which is now 60 kilometers.
Is that direction to administration to look into that? Or did you want to answer right now?
Well, with councils, with the rest of the councillors' approval, yes, I would ask administration to take a look at it, but...
No one's arguing. It's late, but no one's arguing. So, Mr. CAO, does that sound good to you?
Yeah, we're, we're making notes. And actually, Mr. Sharon says, has indicated he'll, he'll respond in a way, too.
Yes, certainly, we will have that discussion with the county. I will inform council, some, I think some members of council were there at the time of the construction of the East Arterial Road and the establishing of speed limits. And I know a lot of the residents backing on to the East Arterial Road through that section fought hard to hear, to have their voices heard and ensure that that speed limit was held at 60 and not have it at 80, which essentially means 100 in actual how fast vehicles actually travel. And in addition to that, there are residential neighborhoods that are going to be built along both sides of the East Arterial Road, where it now is vacant farm field. But we will certainly have that discussion with the county. And then to your previous point regarding Highway 77 and Highway 3, that we'll have the province, and we'll put in that request to the province that they review it.
Councillor Dunn?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate, it was Sunday, I was out at... at the Taking Steps Breast Cancer Walk and Run at Point Peely, and they raised over $7,000. So kudos to the volunteers and everybody that came out. Great job. Thank you.
Councillor Verbeke.
Thank you, Your Majesty Mayor. Being out of town for a while, I'm not sure, do we have that new speed limit sign that tells you how fast they're going? Has it been used yet, or did we even purchase it? And if so, I have the first location, it should go up.
Do I have to answer that?
No, I think, I think, I think it's bought. I'm not, can somebody give me, answer that?
I'm pretty sure that it, it has been purchased. I'll confirm that, though, and let you know for sure.
Okay. I'd like to see it up sooner than later.
Did you want to disclose the location of your-
Gore Hills Public School.
Okay. No one else? Rob?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And this is just to manage council's expectation, and it relates to your question regarding the pedestrian crossings. And Deputy Mayor, you had asked about the crossing in front of the high school. And I did want to ensure that you were in fact speaking of the existing pedestrian crossing, so the painting and the two yellow signs directly in front of the high school, and not the traffic signal on the trail. Because the pedestrian crossing in front of the high school, with the yellow signs and it's painted to get to the parking lot, that will disappear. But the lights on the trail will remain.
Well, that's the bane of my existence, is the light by the trail. I think you've known that for all the time you've been here. I've hated that light since day one.
Now, I think, I mean, at this particular point in time, given where the guidelines have come, and given the things that we're doing in the community, if it were not to be a traffic signal, as it looks now, it would be pedestrian crossing with lights, and vehicles are required to stop now. And so when it was put in eight years ago, I think a lot of the drivers, you know, were used to having just dominant right-of-way on all of the roads. Cars come first and everyone else waits. That whole mindset is changing. In fact, the opposite is true. The pedestrians now in Ontario have the legal right-of-way at marked crossings, which in fact, every single intersection is, you know, should be looked at as a crossing with pedestrian right-of-way. And so the, the traffic signal at Talbot and the Trail and Oak and the Trail will remain.
Okay, I guess my, my issue was primarily coming from Talbot, coming from the east, when there is the stop, you know, there's stop, and then it backs up into the intersection at Elliot. That, that's probably my most annoying factor in that. I mean, I understand it now, and I understand that there's been lots of changes where we have to wait until the pedestrians are completely across the intersection now, right? Isn't that correct? I believe that's the new, we found, we, we were told that at the, at the county. And that's something that we as drivers will have to really change our method of operation, because once that person is halfway across, you have to wait till they're all the way across. Because I think we've always done that. Well, they're halfway across, we can go. But anyway, that's fine. I, I understand that. It's a new day when it comes to that.
And I think what should improve is the nuisance tripping of that pedestrian signal. We likely won't have people congregating around there, just pressing it to stop traffic.
Anybody else? Laura, do you have something?
Very quickly, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to remind council that this Wednesday, there will be a public consultation with the county and our local municipalities to acquire feedback on the elimination of the vacancy rebate program. So the consultation will take place from 4 to 7 at Essex County Civic Centre. In addition, we're collecting feedback from an online survey until September 30th. So the data will be gathered and will be analyzed and reported back to council for further direction. You may recall my report in May, earlier this year, that we indicated that the elimination of the rebate is ultimately a county decision, but will require, or does require input from this council. So going forward, we'll gather this information, and then county, we will make a recommendation, and then county council will also make a recommendation, and ultimately it requires the ministry approval to eliminate the vacancy rebate program. So that's this Wednesday from 4 to 7.
Thank you, Laura. One thing for me, there was a number of us, myself, councillor Jacobs and his wife, Paul Barnable, as well as the CAO, Mr. Newfelt and his wife, Karen, we were invited to an evening to celebrate the Independence Day of Mexico. It was at the Best Western in Windsor on the riverfront. Wonderful evening, Mexican food, Mexican music, Mexican dance. Yes, tequila, two kinds. A really lovely, lovely evening. Lots of people from the county that were involved, that have been involved with the, with the consulate. Alberta was an, was an excellent host. And then on the Sunday, I attended the Independence Day celebration at the Roma Club. Again, a really wonderful event. There were a lot of our residents that also attended, which was a first for me. We've, we've gone over the last few years to these, and it started out where we, we were really almost the only local people there. And the numbers are increasing, and this was a fantastic turnout. It was held at the Roma Club, and this is a, really a great venue for them as well, like a, a way for the club to make money. It was, it was great to see lots of the migrant workers. We're seeing now lots of families as well, not just the men themselves, lots of our local people, our farmers. It was a, it was a great, great event, so I wanted to mention that as well. And there's something else from the CAO.
Just as you were talking about the evening at the Best Western, and the, the music was phenomenal, the food was phenomenal, but what struck me the most was the way that they began the evening, and they began the evening with the Canadian National Anthem. And I, I was really struck by the fact, how, how comfortable and how honoring they were of our, of our national anthem. I, I thought that was really something.
If I may kick in on that as well, they were very, very pro-Leamington as well during his speech.
I, I think that's been a symbol of the consulate, of the consul in particular, Alberto. When I've said before, he, he's always putting out the hand of friendship, and that truly is what he, what he's, what he's like. And I don't think we've ever had anyone so willing to work with a municipality, and, and we need to take advantage of that because he and, and his staff as well. So, anyway, on that note, motion to adjourn. Councillor Wilkinson, councillor Jacobs, all in favor? Carrie, good night.